All right, if you have any questions, Councilor Bacon. Please, all right. All right, let's call the City Council Work Session for January 6, 2020 to order. Can you roll call, please, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted, here comes Councilor Bacon.
There's Councilor Bacon. Perfect. All right, council agenda and meeting. Anyone, any comments regarding the agenda and meeting for the regular business session? Hearing none. Moving along to item four, council business items. Any items of business, folks, for the work session? Again, hearing none. Let's move on to presentations. Actually, we'll go to the executive session now, Chairman, then?
If we can, Mayor.
Yep, all right, let's do it. Where's my script? All right, the City Council will now meet Executive Session for the purpose of reviewing current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The Executive Session is held for Central O.R.S. 192, 660, Section 2. Legal council representatives and the news media visiting staff and other persons will be allowed to attend the Executive Session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. No decision will be made in this Executive Session. At the end of this Executive Session, we will return to open session in the Council Work Session and welcome the audience back into the room. To work session, and...
Mayor.
Start the recorder. Recorder is starting. All right, Mr. O'Day, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Excellent.
First and foremost, congratulations. Congratulations on your new position. Thank you very much. If you all didn't hear, Sean is moving on from the COG to... Tell me what deputy...
Deputy Director of the Oregon Department of Ethics and Fairness.
Awesome, awesome, congratulations. That's fantastic.
Thank you. I'm excited about it. And you are officially, I think, my last Public Life Tonight meeting with a member.
Is that right? Oh, well, there you go.
Thanks for having me.
Of course.
So, I think tonight, first, for those who are in the audience who may not be familiar with what a council government is and who I am, so I'm Sean O'Day, currently Executive Director of the Land Valley Council of Governments, at least until the end of this month. And for those who aren't aware of what a council government is, I often use analogy that council of governments is to local governments what a local Chamber of Commerce is to local businesses. We are a government entity that is created by agreement of our 42 different public members, consisting of the three counties of Oak, Danah, and Marion, all 33 cities within those counties, a whole host of special districts, including the Chahanale Park and Recreation District is a member, we have the Land ESD as a member, Shemanta Community College is a member, and we are one of the few councils of government in the United States that has a tribal member, and then we have the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron also as a member. So you can see we're a very large organization. We exist primarily to serve as a conduit for federal transportation and economic development orders that then go out to our local government headquarters, about 47 million, and I feel the same way. You see, this is the second attorney I've had to listen to.
For anybody who doesn't know, this is Lincoln, he's the young, the City Council Governor.
Lincoln, you're welcome in China anytime you want. So, we help place up 47 million federal economic transportation dollars to our region every year, but we also, because we're able to pull together all these local government resources, provide a host of services for our local governments, including goal setting. And that's what brings me here tonight. I believe that the city is contracted with one of our contracted facilitators, John Morgan, who will be coming with you in a couple of weeks. I think that it is the 18th? Oh, right around the corner? Great, excellent. So what this presentation is intended to do, it's going to serve as an introduction to goal setting. We're going to talk a little bit about what is goal setting, what is not goal setting, and how it fits into the larger context of what I call strategic management for local government leaders. But first, a little bit about myself, so that you know who it is you're talking to. Just see, I'm probably going to have you advance the slides if this is working.
Okay.
So we go to the next slide. Great. So a little bit about me. I've got over 20 years in public service, working with state and local governments. I began my career, actually, with the Association of Washington Cities of the Washington State in the 90s, I think it was before I went to law school. I became a lawyer where I loved local government so much, I came back to work for state and local government. Within my career span, it's about eight years with the city of Salem, four years in the city charities office, and four years in city management, because I've been sitting in the industry there. And, as I think many of you know, I'm also a reserve military officer and currently serving on the Government Ethics Commission. It is that combination of experience that really has been brought to bear in the presentation I'm giving to you tonight, as I've sat through many goal setting sessions, participated in goal setting sessions, facilitated them, and have been trained in the art and science of strategic level leadership and strategic design, particularly as the United States military. So, bringing all that together tonight in the presentation I'm giving you, and as a former general counsel of the lead organ cities, where I know I did a lot of training for a lot of you, I've helped facilitate and train literally hundreds of local government officials on various topics, including the topic that we'll be talking about tonight. Next. Thanks, Sue. So we're going to start out with some basic government, kind of governance 101 concepts, because I think they really form the foundation. As you prepare and start to think about the goal setting session we'll be going through in a couple of weeks, it's important to kind of keep some of these fundamentals in mind. First, from my point of view, some might take issue with this, I think that there are two basic pillars to local government, that's transparency and accountability. And those are built upon a foundation of trust, a trust between you and your fellow counselors, a trust between you and the electors who put you in these seats, and others in your community. And we help embody these kind of two different pillars of public trust, and a whole host of laws that you can see at the top of this, you know, mini house that I've built. We've got our Elections Law, our Ethics Law, our Public Records Law, Public Meetings Law, and Budget Law. That's how we've articulated or translated these two pillars of transparency and accountability into the laws and regulations that govern you as a state council and your actions as a state council. In fact, next slide, I often say, if you haven't already, start to build your local government elected official library, kind of your go-to set of resources that you have on your shelf, that you can refer to as you go about your day-to-day actions as a council. And be mindful of these laws and rules and regulations also as you're thinking about, what is the purpose of a local government, what is my purpose as a local elected official? And if you haven't already, start to build this reading library. These slides, by the way, I'm reading with you, so if you feel free to take notes, but they'll also have at your disposal. One of those resources that really every local government official should have on their reading list is the Attorney General's Public Records and Meetings Manual. Although this is written by lawyers, it is really intended for a non-lawyer audience, it's a very helpful resource to you in understanding what your rights and responsibilities are when it comes to connecting business in the public eye, as well as your rights and responsibilities as to the records you create and your retention obligations. You should also, if you don't have a copy of this, obtain and download a copy of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Guide to Public Officials, and that's a sales pitch I would have given even before I served on the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. This is a document that is written by non-lawyers or non-lawyers, and really sets out your ethical responsibilities as public officials with respects of gifts, conflicts of interest, executive session, and a whole host of other laws that we have in place in the state of Oregon that regulate your conduct as elected officials. There are also two other documents that I often recommend, because I know some of you are newer to local government, that you download and peruse. These are not necessarily ones you have to re-cover to cover, but these extend them to gain some basic familiarity, and that is the Oregon Department of Revenue has a Local Government Budgeting Guide that is very helpful for city counselors, as well as members of budget committees. And I often say, you know, when it comes to, as we'll talk about strategic planning and goal setting, one of the places, the founding places, starting places for the activity is understanding what your resources are. And a budget document is more than just identifying what your resources are, it's really going to be the key instrument in which you identify where your true priorities are. That old adage, you know, you put your money where your mouth is. If you want to look at what an organization's true priorities are, take a look at how they're spending their money. And understanding the process by which you develop the budget in Oregon, again, it's just kind of a building block, basic governance 101 thing that I recommend all public officials become familiar with. And then another one that is also equally important is restrictions on political activities. You, as elected officials, have fewer restrictions than your staff does, but understanding where those lines are, what are the do's and don'ts for you when it comes to engaging in political activity at state or local level, and what the do's and don'ts are for your staff in engaging in political activity at the local level. Again, what might this have to do with goal setting and strategic planning? Well, it may be that part of your goals will be to put a measure out to the voters to perhaps raise some revenue, or to have them vote on a matter of public policy, something that you decide to refer to the voters. Again, understanding what your staff can and cannot do is going to impact how you put together your strategic plan around that particular argument. Next slide. Basically, a quick overview here, we're going to shift gears a little bit and talk about city government structure in Oregon. Just, this is a little bit more for the public than perhaps it is for some of you, but understanding, you know, what does it mean to be a mayor council form of government, I think is really important. Again, before you engage in your strategic planning and goal setting, understand how is it that you're structured, how is it that responsibilities, roles and responsibilities are divided, and also understand that you are a home rule entity and what that really means. So, first of all, home rule, Oregon is a home rule state. What that means is that unlike other parts of the country, where local governments must look to the state legislature to identify their sources of action and their sources of authority, in Oregon, once a city has adopted a home rule charter, then those voters of that community have vested all government power into their city government. That means that you get to do anything that you'd like unless the legislature has told you that you can't. We often refer to those as preemptions under Oregon law, preemptions under ability, or sometimes mandates, like, for example, Oregon Public Records Law is a good example of a mandate, it's a preemption of a local government home rule authority. But this is really an important concept to understand, because in other parts of the country, you can't make a decision, you can't set a goal that would engage in a particular program or initiative unless you can point to state government, or, excuse me, a state law that says you can. I often refer to those states as a show me where it says I can state. In Oregon, you don't have to look to the state legislature for permission. You get to do whatever you want unless the state legislature has granted you, or a show me where it says I can't sort of situation. So, for example, if you chose to do so, you could decide as a city council, one of your goals for the next year would be to run a hot dog stand. No, may not be the best idea in the world, but legally, you can do it unless the state legislature has told you that you can't. And the last time I checked, there was no state preemption on cities running hot dog stands. And, to my knowledge, there is no city or state of Oregon that's doing that. So there are a lot of things that city governments are doing in Oregon that are very innovative and unique, and it is one of the great parts about our state and the home rule authority that we give our local governments, is that really, truly, the sky is the limit when it comes to you thinking strategically, considering your goals, and deciding what kind of community you want to have. Now, our home rule authority also allows our city government in Oregon to decide how it's going to structure itself. In your case, you are what's called a council manager form of government, which in my view is one of the most efficient forms of local government in the state of Oregon. While we can compare that, contrast it to a mayor council form of government, where the mayor resides over meetings, but collectively is a body that mayor council form of government runs the city, day-to-day operations. I know of one city in the state of Oregon where the mayor's duty is to go out and collect the water sample from the drinking water supply and send it into the state DEQ for testing. This is a city of about 15 population, they have no staff, the mayor and the council are both the elected policy setting body, as well as the implementing day-to-day running of the city body. I often analogize this to homeowners association. If you've ever been a part of the homeowners association, mayor council forms of government operate a lot the same way. And it is not always the most efficient way of running an organization. We can also compare yours form with a strong mayor form of government, where the mayor is elected to run the city operations, and the council is elected to set policy. We only have two strong mayors form of government in the state of Oregon, based on who the two are. Beaverton is one, that's right. It's in our region, right down the street, starts with an A, has an airport to the north of it, Aurora. Aurora is the other strong mayor form of government in Oregon. The difference between the two, mayor's oil gets paid and the mayor of Aurora does not. But nonetheless, the mayor of Aurora is responsible for the day-to-day operations of that city hall. And then the other form of government, again, to compare and contrast yours, is a commission form of government, where elected officials run for city council, and then they are either run for a particular seat that has special executive authority associated with it. You remember the show The Commish, where the Commissioner of Public Safety ran for that seat on the city council? Or, in Oregon, we only have one commission form of government, that's the city of Portland, where commissioners run, they are elected to the county, to the city commission, and the mayor makes appointments as to what bureaus each commissioner is going to oversee, but those commissioners actually have executive authority over the day-to-day operations of the city. Now, what's important about all of this to understand is that your form of government is very different. In a council manager form of government, you look more corporate and structured. You look very much like a publicly held corporation, where the voters are the shareholders who elect you to be the board of directors. They may select, or you may select, depending upon the council manager form of government, your chair, chairman or chairwoman of the board, and collectively as a body, you then appoint and hire a chief executive officer. That chief executive officer is responsible then for running the day-to-day operations of the city and implementing and executing your vision, which means that within your city structure, your primary responsibility is to set the overall strategic direction of the city, and which is a pretty powerful and pretty amazing thing, and often cities will do that through the goal setting process. Next slide. Very quickly, this slide breaks down the goals within a mayor council, or, excuse me, within a manager council form of government a little bit more. The voters, as you can see here, elect you to your offices. You then set the law and the policy through the adoption of ordinances, resolutions, and motions. You must act as a body, of course, you know, one of you can have independent legal authority to decide the direction of the city. You have to do it as a group. With the exception of the mayor, who has some duties specifically spelled out by charter, you don't have any individual authorities or duties unless, as a majority, you were to vote and appoint one of you to take a particular action. Otherwise, you have to act as a body in setting the policy of the city. Then, one of the most important decisions you make, and I think they're going to be the process you are about to conclude right now, is the hiring of a city manager. That person who's then going to implement and execute on the policy direction that you set through the adoptions of your ordinances, resolutions, and motions. That person then manages the staff, who then report back to the city manager, collectively the manager and the staff gather information, and will watch for trends, giving the best professional advice and recommendations that they can give you as you set policy, and you in turn then lead the community, the voters that elected you. And you can see this cycle, this is how city government is supposed to work in a manager council form of government. Next slide. So you can see that your primary responsibility at this point truly is to set the overall policy and strategic direction of the organization. And this is a little mental model that I would ask you to kind of keep in mind as you go into your goal setting in the next couple of weeks, as to where you sit within this chart and where it is that your staff sits. So I like to think of kind of organizational behavior or organizational responsibilities in these three big buckets. You've got tactics, you've got operations, and then you have strategy. And the higher up you are in the organization, the more likely it is you're going to deal with strategy and a lot less with tactics. But the problems that you have to deal with are also going to become much more complex. Another way of looking at it is the tactics is what we do, operations is how we manage what we do, and strategy is leading the overall organization. So, somebody comes in, decides that they want to, actually, I'll start from the top, work my way down. Let's say as a city council, you wanted more affordable housing in your community. That might be one of your goals. So your job is to identify what that specifically looks like, where it might be located, and to begin to work with staff on any sort of regulatory barriers that might be in place that needed to be removed, or certain incentives that might be developed. That is all strategy in the beginning. The, taking that direction then, and starting to draft ordinances and create incentive programs, and bringing back to you for your adoption those various programs and amendments, that's operations. That's going to be the work of the manager, with their department directors, and aided by staff. And if you do it all right, then the developer's going to come in with a development permit, they're going to show up at the permit counter, and they're going to slide their application across the table, pay their fee, and the receiver permits and proceed. That's tactics. Now, the reason why I go through this is because I often see councils and goal settings start to slide into tactical level, because it's in some places, it's a lot more concrete, it's a lot more discernible, the complexity, the problems are a lot less, and it's often easy to come up with solutions for that. But understand, that's not your role. As members of this council, it is your role to think at those higher levels. What is it that you want your community to be, to engage in what I call strategic level leadership? Next slide. So what is strategic level leadership? Well, here's my definition, you can probably think about it, come up with your own, but ideally strategic leadership is the process of letting people, systems, and resources to achieve a vision for the particular enterprise that you're leading, while enabling those that are going to be doing the work with the tools and resources that they need, and eliminating the barriers that might otherwise be in their way. And, if you are a fan of the SWOT analysis, you can see my, in my definition, that it's the end, which is the maximum internal strength, overcome those internal weaknesses, exploit external opportunities, and eliminate external threats. That's your role. If I were to drop the job description for elected officials in Oregon, this would be it. And the way that you do it is conceptually, through critical thinking and problem analysis, you do it with, you know, technically with the understanding of governance principles, which is why I began this presentation tonight with a little bit of an overview of the two pillars of public service and the local government reading list, because you really should, if you haven't already, educate yourself on those basic governance fundamentals, it will make you a better strategic leader. And if you do so, of course, through interpersonal development skills, building consensus amongst yourselves and within the community, and then helping to lead that community forward through communication. Next slide. Putting this into practice, this is what I call my strategic planning framework, and it's again a kind of a mental model that I want you to think about as you go into your goal setting with John Morgan here in a couple of weeks. I often refer to this as the the ends, ways, means slide, where the ends are your overall objectives. This is your end state, your vision, this is what you want your community to be. Often, ends are enduring. You have a vision statement on the wall right now, that Newburgh will cultivate a healthy, safe, commitment environment, my head's a bit older, where citizens can work, play, and grow in a friendly, dynamic, and diverse community, value partnerships, and opportunity. I think I read that word. That is a great end statement. When you engage in your strategic plan though, it's important to revisit that, and ask yourselves as a group of individuals, is that the direction you still want to go with your community? That's step one. Step two then is to do a little bit of a resource inventory, identify what do you currently have at your disposal? This resource inventory part of the process is going to rely, you're going to have to rely upon your staff, and often involves a lot of staff work. These are your means, these are your resources that are available to you. Generally for local governments, we're talking about people, time, and money, and how much extra capacity beyond what you're currently trying to achieve as a day-to-day operation, how much extra capacity is there? Unlike ends and objectives, which are pretty enduring, they really don't change too much. My guess is that that vision statement you have on the wall, which is an excellent vision statement, looks a lot like the one the council before you may have created, and the one before that may have created. They tend to vary very slightly over time, but they do change a little bit. Your means, highly variable. How much capacity your staff has, how much resources are you raising as far as revenue, this can go up and down, it can be quite volatile. The good news is, because we're not a property tax state unlike other local governments, they see a lot of variability in their tax income. For us in Oregon, it's pretty stable. The problem we have is that our taxes are not keeping pace with our expenses because it measures 550, which is a significant strategic problem that you'll want to be mindful of when you go into your goal setting. So what is goal setting, and where does it fit on the slide? Well, you can see, when it comes to the ways, this is the how, how you're going to link your existing resources with your desired end state, that's where goal setting happens. That's what you're really trying to do when you set goals, is to identify the priorities and the ways in which you want your manager and your staff to get, taking available resources, and get the city where you want to take it. And a good strategic plan with goal setting will help you flush that out and identify the projects, initiatives, and programs you want to put in place, sustain, or maybe change, or alter, or eliminate, because it's no longer allowing you to hit your desired end state. And goals should always be feasible, suitable, and acceptable. The ways in which you're going to marshal your resources to achieve your end state should be within your means, that's feasibility. It should be suitable, appropriate for the entity. Operating the hot dog stand may not be so suitable for a city government, right? And it should be acceptable, meaning your stakeholders agree, your residents are in agreement, your staff is in agreement, and you are in agreement. But there's enough of a majority and a will to move forward that you can then hit that desired end state. Next slide. You've probably heard of SMART goals, that's really where that comes from. Developing your goals is should be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timed out, or at least have some sort of timeframe associated with it. If you do that, and this is hard work, if you take the time to really think about what you want as a council for your community, if you do an inventory of your existing resources and capacity, and identify gaps within that, and start to develop ways that either fill those gaps and put to use your resources to exploit the opportunities that are in front of you, to remove barriers that are otherwise threatening your progress, and you do so with SMART goals, ones that are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timed out, you'll be able to move mountains. And you'll make the most of your time, and you'll meet with John Morgan here in about two weeks. So that's my presentation, on strategic level thinking and leadership for the local government officials. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's your last official...
Good evening.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you, Sean, thank you for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck in...
Yes.
Thank you.
Stay in touch, right?
I will, I will. Please do the same.
Okay. All right, thanks so much. All right, we've got a little bit of time, it looks like, so, how's about the city managers' report?
This will take a whole lot, because by and large, I wasn't here most of the last month. So, as, most of what I've done over this last little period of time is work with you to get you to a new city manager. So, as you know, we've done a whole lot of recruiting, a lot of this I have in front of you shortly this evening as well. We do have your final candidate, met Friday. Maybe we should back up, I started back in July of 2019 with pretty much my sole mission being to achieve to this point in time, so here we arrive. We have been at it for months now, back in August, we selected, we solicited a recruiter, we spent some time together, put together the job pro forma, and advertised a position, and I believe cut off applications sometime in late November, November 17th, I believe, was the date, maybe the 24th, anywhere in that neighborhood. I believe was the date, maybe the twenty-fourth, anywhere in that neighborhood. We ended up with some thirty-seven candidates, one of which withdrew, as we had thirty-six. You were, after our recruiter, Walden Associates, had against it her job, we've managed to nail it down to ten for your consideration. You spent a good portion of an evening, uh, taking that ten down to five. Uh, those five came before the community in a community gathering, uh, both I did. Um, then had, uh, Sunday evening in December, sixteen I believe, and you followed the next day with the individual, uh, interviews in three separate panels. So you had a wholesome help from your, from the community in reviewing and, uh, you know, putting, uh, trying to identify the, uh, person that will lead you into the future. And I think, uh, through that effort, you've got, uh, candidates that I think, many of which, they, in your top five couldn't have done this job, you selected one. This past Friday evening, you directed us, us all, and the recruiter, to do some negotiations. We, uh, have a staff report in front of you that indicates that we were successful. Um, this person comes in at a, uh, hundred sixty thousand dollar annual salary, which is a median middle of the salary range, uh, the, the rest of the benefit package is a comparable package, uh, to what is out there in the marketplace. Um, so, I think you are at a point where this person has agreed to take the job, will begin, uh, with your not of approval, uh, February twenty-fourth, which will then bring my service to you to an end. So, um, I'm pretty happy, and I'm pretty proud of the work you've all done, because frankly, you've got a very strong candidate, a very strong leader who will help you get through to the future, I believe. He comes with his family, uh, from Colorado, Dan Weinheimer, and with a great track record, uh, in various government, local governments, uh, both in Colorado and California. So I think, uh, we've all done well together, and I think you're going to have, I think you're going to be very proud of being able to bring in somebody who will be committed to this community for years to come, and I think has every opportunity for success. So, I'm pretty happy with the work we've all done, that's really largely what I've been working on here for more than this short duration between, uh, the end of my, uh, hours in December and, uh, reboot in January, so here we are today. Um, other than that, we have, I think you've all seen a copy of an email I sent around to staff, we have Alison Seeler sitting in as our interim HR director. Uh, we also have, uh, and Alison has many years of experience as well, uh, is retired from many years as an HR director in her own right, has come back and, you know, part-time capacity in serving the city, and was called upon to assist us in this time. So she gracefully and gratefully accepted, and will do a great job for us, you know, as long as needed. Um, we have, and I think this question, Pat, like you indicated, you wanted a conversation about this a little bit as well, uh, the IT master plan that has been put on temporary hiatus pending the arrival of Dan Weinheimer in the community, an opportunity for him to visit and get us, you know, get us, get his feet on the ground, get a sense of what our needs are, and participate in that, uh, work effort. We have asked that the interviews that were scheduled continue to be completed, so if they, I'm not sure if you've had a scheduled interview or not, but we've asked if you do, is keep, keep that going. Um, and then the final thing that I always just wanted to mention is we are, in the middle of this month, uh, we will be kickstarting the budget processes that time. Um, the budget worksheets will be going out to the department heads in, in January, same time that you're doing the goal setting, so it, to, during the course of your goal setting, if you have some efforts that will, uh, you know, will have an impact on the formulation of the budget, that will be a good time to be talking about that. We're not going to ask you to dive into any numbers during that time, but just at a conceptual high level, what are services that you want to see enhanced, or where are, there's some, you know, wherever you want that conversation to go. So be on that Saturday, the eighteen, if you'll have, you know, some of that time maybe available, is available to you, if you choose to use it for that purpose. Staff will certainly appreciate the input from you at that level, like beginning of the process. You of course, put a lot of your time towards the tail of the process, when the budget committee comes together, then takes up the project, the work, and then finally the, ask the council to consider it. But being in the beginning is always the time to be, be most effective. So that's largely what I have for the scene, unless you have questions about what's going on, and I can answer.
Thank you. All right, uh, let's see, what about, uh, any council, council committee reports? I've still a few to answer here. Can you go to Patrick?
I always take the opportunity to talk about the bypass. So there's a special meeting of the department committee Thursday, uh, where we're starting to talk about the special sections, special session, and how we're going to approach that. Um, that's pretty much all I have to report, is, uh, probably we'll be spending some time during the short session, uh, testifying, uh, down there, trying to get, sort of, maybe the people who bypass. If you have some, they continue to work on design, and so, builders are kind of finalized, or, uh, building, you know, they're starting to buy right away out there, uh, which is pretty exciting. So I'll buy, uh, across the street from Lake Rex Hill, we purchased two or three pieces of property out there, so if you see equipment out there, clothing buildings and things, that's kind of, they're starting to think about where it's going to go, and how it's going to route through that area. Um, and then also the road stuff should be done, they're working on that this year, with a, a pretty aggressive timeline on that, and I hesitate to do a final debate, because they've been great so far, but I don't want to debate, so, but they're working on that as well, so, you know, things are moving.
Uh, anyone else? Anyone else?
I like to visit, it's great. Not good.
Anyone else? Um, I've just got, I've got one thing that, um, time for me will get significantly busy here, starting tomorrow, um, so, I'm currently, there, let's see, downtown coalition, I'm attending, attending the PCC Newburgh Advisory and the Chamber of Commerce, those three. Any of those that occur on afternoons, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday, are going to be more difficult for me, so I may be reaching out to you all if, uh, if either you all or staff can, can cover at least, uh, between January and May, you know, to, I don't have a schedule, but, uh, anyway. Anything else for committee reports, anything? All right, anything else, Sue, that you think we can mention now? How's about?
The YCAT, what time is it now?
Yes, the YCAT, right. All right.
Stand up for the train.
Did you? Okay, so the Y-
Right, the twenty-second.
Okay, and this is for council as well as anyone in the audience. Um, a point in time homeless count will be conducted on, uh, January twenty-ninth. Um, so if people are interested in, in helping with this homeless count, it's a, it's a big service, YCAT conducts it, um, and please, there are, if you'd like, we've got contact information here for, for how to register and be in touch with, with folks at YCAT. Yeah, and it's very, very needed, very necessary, so, uh, do keep that one in mind. Uh, another one that I know, uh, Councillor Johnson's involved with, we'll talk about later, is Will Ammon Falls Locks, and that'll be coming up in the, a little bit later in the agenda. All right, unless we have anything else, I'd say, hearing nothing, let's adjourn. We'll be back in session in ten minutes. All the January sixth, twenty twenty city council business sessions are ordered. A roll call, please, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, I would personally note that I would ask for the record that everyone speaks clearly and into the microphones this evening.
Okay. Um, and also, uh, Councillor Slitz, since we've got this sort of, uh, temporary system, let, Sean, let me make sure you flag me down and then identify yourself when we, when we speak, so that we've got it for the record. Uh, and that brings also, uh, we've got a, a full house again, um, this evening, and, um, so, any side conversations, if you all could take them out into the, into the lobby, that would be much appreciated, we've got, uh, a number of business items tonight that we'll, we'll try to get through. Um, the others, if you do have public comments for general comments, or for comments regarding a specific item on the agenda, reforms are right on the table in the front, you can fill those out and get those to Sue. All right, um, without any further ado, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever-tying justice for all.
All right, thank you. Um, before we go any further, I guess I'd like to take, um, um, the, I guess, maybe brief liberty to, first off, wish all of the council and city staff a happy new year, and to all of the residents of Newburgh as well, a very happy new year. Um, as you undoubtedly know, twenty nineteen has been a bit of a challenge for the city of Newburgh and city staff, and my, and I believe the council's sincere hope is that we have the vision in twenty twenty to move beyond some of our challenges and, and move to the potential that we all know this community has. So not to be too trite, but I think we need twenty twenty vision in the current year. So, yeah, well, that being right. So, um, and that's what I believe, and we just had, for those who weren't here, we had a, a discussion on council goal setting, and the role of the council in relation to council, city manager, and staff, um, and I think that's something that we need to continue to, uh, reflect on, and that ours is a policy function, not so much a detail function on things like personnel matters, et cetera. So, anything else, council? Um, gearing, opening the new year. Okay. Uh, moving right along, uh, the election of council president, um, our, our good friend and esteemed colleague Denise Bacon, who has served in the function for a number of years, has decided not to, uh, pursue that again this year. Um, so that having been said, I would like to nominate, even though he says, yes, he is, yes. Now, even though this person does not work in town, um, I believe by the demands of what the council president does, as far as I understand, is basically to sit in when the mayor is absent, uh, and to run these meetings. Um, and given that, with, um, the longevity, I would like to nominate Patrick Johnson to be the next council president. Um, you are welcome. So, um, I understand that a second is not needed, interestingly enough, it is not needed. Um, so we can move right into a vote, if you all, unless someone has another nominee. Hearing none, all in favor of Councillor Patrick Johnson being the next council president, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same side. Patrick, thank you very much. All right, so moving on to item five A, the presentation of the independent auditor report and comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June thirty, twenty nineteen.
Do I speak, Steve, Patrick?
No, I'm good.
I can't, I was already.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us here tonight. We, uh, are bringing to you the opportunity we have every year, which is to have a candid audit by a qualified and disqualified firm. And, uh, last time we reported, we actually had an opportunity to go out for a, a request for proposals and reevaluate the firms that are out there, and, uh, we did that, and we were pleased to find that Bull Carlin Smith, we've been doing audit for a number of years, pleased to view, uh, this, this year, they won the RFP process, and, uh, were pleased with the services they offer. Uh, it goes beyond just, uh, like a many statements, they, uh, like a lot of firms will do, and training that we find to be really valuable, Dan, we'll be able to do that, and, uh, it's a four-hour process, and all that's happened in the last, in the last few years, issues out there, what are you going to focus on, so, it's a lot more of partnership than just take it for the kind of what we got, so.
All right, we can add here, back here.
It needs to be right up on the microphone, right up on the microphone.
I want to just test it.
Is this better?
Pat, can you hear that?
Is that any better?
Go on.
Okay. I will use a lot of words. Thank, thank you. So, uh, the, the financial statements that you have before you for the year ending, uh, June thirty, twenty nineteen, and, and in essence, uh, we received, uh, auditors report with no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Uh, there were a couple, uh, budget violations that, uh, we've explained in the, the staff report. Um, we also were able to include the third year MO, uh, the strategic achievement for, uh, financial reporting, uh, which is an award that comes from the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, at a national level. There's a, a long checklist of items that we have to include with our report, it's not just the inclusion of, but the quality of that, so, um, after, uh, this is the third year in a row we've received that, we had a couple of your ideas when I, I first came on, but, uh, so anyways, that's kind of a highlight of why we're here. Brad Dinkin, I'm a partner for Bull Carlin Smith, he's here to speak directly to you about, uh, his process and highlight of the, the, the.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, yes, uh, my name is Brad Dinkin, I'm a partner with Bull Carlin Smith, uh, CPA firm, uh, we have offices in Salem, Albany, and Satan, uh, we've been doing municipal audits throughout our career, uh, throughout the firm's history of fifty years now. So, uh, this is vital to our, our organization, we take this part of our practice very seriously. So, uh, we have audited the financial statements for the year ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen, and we have issued our report on it. And as you said, what you hires to do is to give an opinion on those financial statements. So, in, in the, uh, comprehensive annual financial report, you'll find our auditor's report, which in nutshell says that in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position and results of operations for the city for the year ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen. In arriving at our opinion, we actually applying two different sets of auditing standards. The first set of auditing standards are the generally subject of auditing standards issued by the American Institute of CPAs. Uh, those are, are the standards that apply to all audits. In addition, uh, we also, uh, have to have applied, um, requirements of the Oregon minimum standards for audits of municipal corporations. These are initial standards issued by the Oregon Secretary of State in conjunction with Oregon state legislature. So we have two reports in it, uh, so the first ones that I recite is our opinion on the financial statements, uh, and when we look at financial statements, I want to go over just a few financial highlights, and it's a, it's a very thick document, it's over, over two hundred pages, and I'm sure everybody here doesn't want me to read it page by page. So, uh, some highlights of it, so the, uh, city ended the year with total assets and deferred outflows of two hundred and twenty-five point four million dollars. Uh, ended the year with liabilities and deferred incomes of sixty-nine-four, four million dollars, which left a net position of a hundred fifty-six million dollars. Look at the city as a, you know, as a whole, on a full accrual basis, that was your, your ac, essentially ending equity was a hundred fifty-six million dollars, which was an increase of five million dollars from the year before. And that five million dollars is an increase on total revenues of nineteen point four million dollars. We start to look at the individual governmental funds, obviously the, uh, general fund is the most important fund of the city, it carries on the vast majority of city activities. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of four point five million dollars, which was a slight increase of three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Uh, this spring fund, also a very significant fund of the city, that ended the year with ending fund balance of two point four million dollars, which was an increase of, uh, just over a million dollars, about a one point one million dollars increase. The building inspection fund ended the fund, a year with a fund balance of one point seven million, which was a small increase of two hundred and two thousand. If we look at all the governmental funds together, you had a total, uh, ending fund balance of fifteen point one million, which was an increase of two hundred and seventy thousand overall. So look at your, your governmental funds, small increase in that fund balance, uh, over the year. In looking at the revenue expenditures, the total governmental funds had twenty point two million dollars of revenues. Private taxes make up five million dollars of that, and other taxes make up four point five million dollars. So almost half of your total revenues are in form of taxes, that you receive. So, almost half of your total revenues are in the form of taxes that you receive. Your total expenditures were $20.3 million. Out of that $20.3 million, salaries and wages represented $7.9 million of that. Retirement benefits, including payments on the purse bond, represent another $2 million. And other employee benefits also represent another $2 million. So, of your total expenditures, over half of it are going directly to employee costs. The city also operates three proprietary funds. The water system, the wastewater system, and the stormwater fund. The water fund ended the year with an ending net position of $1.9 million, which is an increase of $1.8 million. The wastewater fund ended the year with $40 million, which is an increase of $1.9. And the stormwater fund had an ending net position of $9.8 million, which is an increase of about $0.5 million. So, as said, you know, a lot of money is spent for employees. So, I have in your packet there a little chart showing five years of payroll costs and retirement expenditures. So, you see that your payroll costs, five years ago, were about where they are today. There was a slight dip there between 2016 and 17, when you turned over the operations of the EMT fund to the fire district. So, that caused a dip. But you'll see the line there, looking at the contributions to your retirement fund, that has continued a gradual increase, even if you had that dip in the total wages. This will say that the retirement funding burdens are going to continue to be a significant factor on all governments in Oregon, and really something that we have to be paying attention to. As I said, we apply two sets of standards. The second one is the Oregon minimum standards for audits of municipal corporations. It addresses two areas. First, we're required to look at compliance with specific Oregon laws and regulations. And we performed tests to see if the city wasn't compliant with them. The results of our tests didn't indicate any instance of non-compliance, except for the two items that Matt already mentioned, where there were expenditures in excess of appropriations. The second thing that our report covers is internal controls. Now, an audit of a set of financial statements is not the same thing as an audit of your internal controls. As part of our audit, we gain an understanding of the internal controls, so we can properly plan our audit. What we're looking for is those areas where controls are strong, which indicates we don't probably need to focus those on as much. And then those areas that have control weaknesses, those areas that for obvious, that represents a higher risk, so we're going to spend more time looking at those areas. And whenever we're talking about internal controls, we talk about five components. The first one is control environment, which is kind of the tone of the organization. How does everything operate? So, it's very high-level, you know, top-to-top type of consideration. Then we look at the risk assessments that the city has. You know, if you're going to institute internal controls, you're doing those to mitigate risks. So, it's look at what risks are the city trying to address in their internal controls. We consider the information and communication systems of our organization, how they flow through. We look at control activities, who's going to coordinate, ensure there's adequate execution of duties. And they're saying, is there a monitoring function to ensure that internal controls carry on throughout the year and, from year to year, to ensure that there are no breaks during the year that create, this is what we need to focus on. So, that's a very quick overview of our audit and the financial statements. If you have any questions, I do have to answer them.
I guess I have one question, and this is, I guess this speaks to risk management particularly as, you know, everyone undoubtedly knows, we have based number of lawsuits and the current pending lawsuits. But I noticed that you have a note that basically refers to our insurance through county insurance services, but that's the extended note, essentially.
Yes.
Okay, and is that because of the anticipated risk or the potential risk financially to the organization, to the city?
So, you know, we always have some disclosure there, and since we're required to, so we talked about, you know, how the city is addressing their risk management. Insurance is the number one thing that you do to minimize the risk of financial loss to the city. So, we consider those things as part of our audit, and so it is a disclosure there. Generally speaking, unless there's something that is actively pending, such that we have conferred with legal counsel to determine whether there's anything that further needs to be disclosed. And we do consider those things, consider them in terms of, you can see it can happen between the time, the end of the year and the date of our auditor's report, as it can happen there that needs to be disclosed. Also, considering, is there any contingencies at the end of the year that need to be disclosed? Those are the things that may impact the city financially, you know, probable that they'll be impacting the city financially. But we know those disclosures may, in conjunction with consultation with legal counsel and city management.
Thank you. Anyone else, anything else? All right, Matt, what do you need from us?
Well, as the faculty and gators voted on the top of the staff report, to accept the audit report and comprehensive annual financial statement. Sorry for the cycle. I would, by the way, I want to give Caleb and Dan. One of the things that happened three, three, four years ago was the expansion of the financial department to, in my estimation specifically, to bring the expertise to do this, as was done prior. So, Dan and Caleb carried both of that, as well as the rest of the finance staff. So, I kudos to them for that.
Well, and I know that an unqualified opinion is exactly what you're after, so, so, thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the audit report and comprehensive annual financial statement, caper.
Second. Let's be with a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, this is up to you. Thank you, Matt, thank you very much. All right, on to item 7A, council appointments. Doug, are you handling this, or you got it? All right, all right. All right, council appointments. The first one being appointments to the Ad Hoc Urban Renewal Citizens Advisory Committee. All right, let me read these, the names of the folks who have so generously devoted their time to this ad hoc committee, providing you accept them, that is. That would be Patrick Johnson as liaison from council, John Bridges, Molly Olson, Angel Aguirre, Don Clements, Joe Morlock, Francisco Stoller, Lonnie Parrish, Don Griswold, Shannon Buckmaster, who I believe I saw, and Cassandra Holden. Any further discussion, folks?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, two things, bypassing urban renewal. We, literally, I wanted to say one thing tonight before we do this, and that is, over the holiday, because I'm psycho, I read as much as I could, get my hands on about urban renewal in Oregon, and came across a guideline for best practices for urban renewal in Oregon, written by one of the authors, who was our very own Doug Rux. And another author is our actual consultant that we hired to our feasibility study. So, I think we're in very good hands with this. Then I look at the list of volunteers who are going to help us, and I'm feeling really confident that we're going to get a good study out of this, so, thank you for making this hard.
And then just for the audience, you may not have benefited, the study area that we're considering, or this committee will be looking at, is downtown area to the riverfront. So, that particular area for urban renewal. Any other comments or other? Okay, a motion will work.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to move to appoint the members to Ad Hoc Urban Renewal Citizens Advisory Committee, the ones that you read off.
Jean, this time. Okay, any further discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the appointment passes. Next, appointments to the Ad Hoc Economic Opportunities Analysis Citizens Advisory Committee. All right, and this will be, Jean Garros will be the council liaison, providing to approve this. Other members to be Kurt Walker, Alan Routh, Philip Higgins, Sid Friedman, Carl Biggerstaff, Bob Woodruff, Alvin Albert, Keith Hanson, Isa Peña, and Jim Bush. All right, and this is, after we completed the community visioning, this is to ensure, to ensure that we have the land that we need in order to meet our economic and housing needs. Any other comments or comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, how's that, a motion?
I will also make a motion on this one. I move to the appointment of the members to Ad Hoc Economic Opportunities Analysis Advisory Committee, and I'm as ready for it.
And Patrick with a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the appointment passed. And thank you to all of those who have volunteered to do this. Citizen input is hugely important for these kinds of things, so thank you. All right, let's move on to public comments. All right, so I've, all right, I've got a few here. So, a couple of comments regarding public comments, for anyone who might not have been here earlier. This part of the meeting, is there any comments that involve general business in the city that is not otherwise on the agenda? We limit it to five minutes per person, and we'd like you, if you come up, please give your names and also your residence address when you approach the microphone. Speak clearly into the microphone, and we'll go from there. And then, again, as I mentioned before, any side conversations, if you can move to the lobby, that would be much appreciated. So, let's start this evening with Renzi Holloway, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. For those of you who aren't aware, there's a marijuana processing facility.
All right, so very stop, you just provide your name and the residence address, thank you.
Renzi Holloway, 22935 Southwest Hillsborough Highway, Newburgh. So, for those of you that aren't aware, there's a marijuana processing facility that's approved. It's currently going through appeals process up off of 219 in Jackwood. If you're not aware of where Jackwood is, it's the very apex of the hill. You go over 219 from Hillsborough. I've come to the council that, yes, I know it's out of your official jurisdiction, but it clearly affects everyone who lives in Newburgh officially, and those of us on the hill who are unofficially Newburgh residents. To give a quick background, the grow facility has not been approved to pull water from the wells. Instead, they're having trucks that water from McMinnville. They've already bought the truck and helped the access to McMinnville. The problem is, at the amount of the grow they are required to have, they all run the processing facility, we are talking about 18 to 30 water trucks a day coming from McMinnville through downtown Newburgh, up over 219, making a left-hand turn at a blind intersection. I can break down the numbers if people would like more information about why, in terms of how you got that number of trucks. It's, they are approved for 90,000 pounds of grow. You get the grow 24,000 pounds on site. All official documentation says that they stream down with water per day, per plant, or per pound, I'm sorry, per pound. And their water truck hauls over, just over 1,500 gallons. So, that's a minimum of 32 plus trucks, or 32 back-and-forth trips from McMinnville. That does not include the fact that they are also applying for another six acre acres of hemp, or even the water that they leave from the processing facility itself. I know you guys don't have the mail of this issue specifically, but I bring it to you because what I'm asking is that you take into consideration into how it affects all of our lives in Newburgh and here, and come back to the council with at least a letter stating the position, if you feel you can take one on this. Because it clearly affects everyone who lives in Newburgh, who commutes to McMinnville, everyone who lives in Newburgh and commutes to Hillsborough. All of us that have kids going to Newburgh School Districts, bus rides are going to be longer. There's a danger that if there's an accident at the top of the hill there that closes down 219, that means people can't get back into Newburgh if they commute out, or vice versa. If, you know, heaven forbid, someone at the top of the hill has a heart attack, and the water trucks are slowing down access to us, we can't get back down to the hospitals down here. And I think importantly, it also affects the businesses. It's going to affect whether we can get to Newburgh to shop. If we can't get off the hill in the normal 15, 20 minutes, and it's going to take us 30 or 40 minutes, and we won't know when that is, we won't know exactly when the water drops on the hill, then I'm sad to say that my links with media here in Newburgh is going to be broken. I won't come into Newburgh to meet my friend in the coffee shop without a beer, or, you know, to put groceries. I'll have to wander to Sherbrooke or Hillsborough, or, let's be honest, those are not nearly as special as Newburgh is. And I just, it breaks my heart to think about disconnecting the community that we'll experience because although we're on the hill and we're not officially inside the Newburgh city limits, we all consider ourselves part of Newburgh, and that's where we choose to live our lives, is to come to Newburgh, to spend our time. So, yes, if you would take the time to review this, I have to say, and I'm sorry, there's a little bit of a rush. The appeals hearing is Thursday, they're saying that anything that's not caught up at the appeals hearing won't be heard. We were, I have to say, absolutely flabbergasted that it got through in the first place, knowing, I'm not sure that planning permission knew how many 219 is, or took any of that into consideration on the water trucks, but I really think Newburgh needs to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Michael, go ahead, please.
Can I just ask a little bit, is that involving tractor, and is that specifically involving tractor that last on it? Is that last on, involved on our ITU tractor?
It came to the one, it's, when we came to the ITU tractor, you had, you asked us that.
All right, Mr. Mike. My reminder is Michael Ben, 416 Southwest Hillsborough, right in Bend, D. Actually, I want to start out by, I compliment the city council, and there's a caveat to that, Phil. I understand that Ms. Lee is no longer here as the HR director. I just, I'm sorry, I understand that Ms. Lee is no longer here as the HR director. Obviously, I'm not sure whether she was terminated or resigned, but at any rate, let's assume she was terminated. I got to compliment you on doing the right thing, because, albeit it's two and a half years late, it's better late than never, but I also want to say that that's not the be-all and-all, that's a start, okay? To try to clean up this mess. But there's certainly plenty of other people that have to be accountable to this, and that's your job to make them accountable. Now, I know that, at least I have the feeling, the majority of the people up here at this table are sick and tired of seeing me here. And, hey, I'm sorry, there are, there are some people that sit at that table and appreciate what I have to say. The reason I'm here is because, while I live in Bend, D., my roots go back to the early 1900s here. My mother's family settled here in the early 1900s. I had lived here the vast majority of my life, other than when I was on active duty in the military and in college. In the 70s, my wife and I lived in St. Allen's for six years, Bushitt Todd School. I've lived in the same house for 44 years, in Bend, D., almost 44 years. And I think you probably already know, by my nature up here, when I see things that are wrong, misconduct, whatever, I'm not somebody to sit back and just sit on my butt and do nothing, okay? And I would much rather come here and tell you how good things are, and people are doing a good job, et cetera. But when I see the kind of conduct that's happened here over the last four and a half years, I'm not going to sit back and say nothing. And I'm not trying to try to insult anybody, I have no personal animosity towards anybody, but I'm going to apologize I see it. I'm going to apologize I see it, so that's why I'm here, okay? Now, let's talk about this Brooks lawsuit from, I'm sure you saw the article in the graphic, actually, the graphic didn't do too bad a job as far as reporting that. As I told you with Brittany Jeffrey's bully complaint, the facts associated with Brooks' lawsuit are appalling. Obviously, Dan Pennell has those facts down to a very specific, he's not going to risk his bar license alleging facts like that that he can't prove, okay? As the council, you ought to be demanding, and I want to emphasize demanding, answers to Mr. Stone, Mr. Klein, everybody else that's been named in that complaint, along with Brittany Jeffrey's bully complaint, Callahan, or Cannon, you know, he's long gone, but he's certainly largely to blame for what's alleged there. And I want to make a suggestion, I would suggest that you go out and hire somebody like Whitehead, or Pennell, or me, somebody like us who used to do this for a living, that's not going to come in here and tell you there's no problem, nobody did anything wrong, et cetera. Somebody can look somebody in the eye and tell them they're lying to them as far as an investigation, because that's the only way you're going to get to the bottom of this mess. Now, I would be remiss, I have no animosity towards Mr. Klein, but Mr. Klein's comments in the graphic were appalling and ludicrous as far as Brooks' lawsuit. According to him, it's all Dan Pennell's fault, because he's just out to make a fuck on this deal. Do you think he invented these facts in this case? You, as a practicing attorney, know your case is only as good as the facts are, okay? And assuming he can prove all those facts in that case, it's your job to step to the plate and say, "We're going to make things right in this case, and we're going to hold people accountable." And that's the bottom line in a situation like that. When Mr. Klein tells me to meet him briefly, I should have come to him and got my facts straight before I ever came in here, the first time I came in and started, you know, raising my concerns there. With all due respect, I hope that Mr. Klein's the guy to go to to get my facts straight. Now, let me just close by this, okay? I would say you measure the performance of the city manager and the city attorney by the amount of lawsuits they keep you out of, okay? And respectfully, it's been abysmal over the last four-plus years as far as the number of lawsuits the city's been sucked into in this case. And you've only got the city employees to blame, and obviously yourself now, to a certain extent, the big evidence, you know, you're starting to try to do anything, I want to believe that, but at any rate, you've got a long ways to go. Now, there was a guy named Harry Truman that said two things, "The buck stops here, and if you can't stand the heat, get the hell out of the kitchen," okay? And I'm going to tell you guys the same thing, the buck stops if you guys, if you can't stand the heat, you ought to resign. It's your job to make this city better, hold these people accountable, and if the news has to be terminated, so be it. I was in business a lot, I had to terminate people, it ain't a fun thing to do, okay? But if that's what you've got to do, that's what you've got to do. And if you don't have the junction and the Florida Duty Center to do that, resign. Get out of the job, it's a thankless job, I told you that the first time here, but nobody forced you guys to take this job on. You're in this job, let's do the right thing, and get this city back on track. And how many people agree with me on that?
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Pat Hay, please.
Can you all hear? Can you come back through here?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we came to hear you.
I think so.
And so far, we haven't heard very much of you. So, let's see, is there a...
No, just far away. The name matters.
My name's Pat Hay, and I'm the reply, although he's still annoying, number fifteen, pass through the city of Newburgh. I have a lot of questions. I'd like to know how much the legal cost for all these lawsuits are going to cost us, the people in Newburgh. I'd like to know how come there's no notice of the city council meeting on the law, of the post office and the library, so people would know when the meetings are, so we can come here and be a part of what's going on in this town, because it's our freaking town. Please, do you understand that? How long have you lived here?
Four years.
Huh?
Four years.
Four years. I've lived here eighty years, okay? I'm really upset about all this because I'm not sure that these people understand what it does to the old timers in this town, people like myself and Mike Gunn and others who've lived here a long time and seen all the changes. And like me, who remembers a forum in the city in nineteen seventy-seven where the whole town practically set, we decided what they wanted this town to be, and it was going to be a nice, small community. Well, we didn't end up being very respected, a year of most of the city. It's a pass through the city now. People drive through here going seventy miles an hour. They drive Illinois Street going seventy miles an hour, they drag race in the middle of the night, they go down Illinois on their rear wheels. There is no cocks, no nothing. I told you about the drug problem a couple meetings ago. I haven't heard anybody talk about the drug problem in this town since that night. Have you? Has anybody talked to you about the drug problem in this town?
Well, I do at work for you.
How about you? How about you? I had a meeting with Rick before he started handling the meetings, do you remember? About two hours, he was kicking my brain, wanted to know what I thought the meeting was. But one thing I told you was, I want to hear these people tell us why they're voting the way they vote. I don't want to hear these bricks saying, "Is there any questions?" Anybody have a second? We don't know how you vote, why you voted the way you do. Do you understand that part? We'd like to know how our representatives vote, and so, why do you vote? There's so much corruption in this town, I've been telling people this for twenty-five years at least, but they never had the courage to come to a meeting. Never. There was never this many people. Today, there is this many people. We care about what happens to our town. We want it to be honest and upright, the government, no more of this, "Hey, a business came to my house before you were put into office with a letter from one of your quarters at the legal office. The letter says, 'Oh, now that Mr. Truman Stone has been proposed as the new city attorney, I'm going to be your new lawyer.'" Well, you know what? They didn't vote on Truman Stone for two weeks after that. But everybody else here knew about it, but not the people, you see? We want more from you than what they're asking you to do. If you're still following Terry Norris' council rulebook, which I have read, and I'm sure you probably are, you all have to vote the same, so that it appears you're together on this thing. I've been to city council minutes for five solid years, and you voted, not you, but they voted unanimously, except one time in five years, remember? That's Volkit. Do you understand that? I'm very...
Rebecca Wallace, please.
Thank you, Mayor of the State Council. All right, can you hear me now? Okay, I'm here tonight to talk about the same thing I've come to the last three meetings and spoken about during my five minutes of time. Weird, right? And of course, a couple of other things at the end. Some other records. I've spoken at three meetings asking for someone to ensure that I get a response to my email, asking for clarification on a policy. I still have yet to receive a response. I get it, I'm sure I'm not well-liked for sharing important information with the citizens of our community that are entitled to information. However, it's disrespectful to me as a citizen and those of us that are asking for clarification on a simple request. David Klein's supposedly back in office now full-time. I have yet to hear from him. The council expectations state, "As a Newburgh City Council member, council members will strive to do the following. Number one, make the citizens and visitors feel welcomed at the meetings by involving them in the process, being courteous to them, and respecting their opinions. It takes quite a lot of courage, a lot of courage, to come up to this seat and speak on the record in front of the entire room, the council, the mayor, and the staff, and give comments on the things we as citizens feel passionate and strongly about. It is not an easy task. So having the mayor call us cowardly for speaking about staff issues is definitely going against the council expectations. You'll break the rule." Number two, do your best to communicate in clear, concise, and audible language and written communication. Last council meeting, there were those of you that actually pushed the microphone away from you, you can watch it on YouTube, and made it very difficult to hear what was being said. Even when the council member, Ms. Arnaud, Holman, asked a staff person what the staff was supposedly to go to, if they already went as high as the city manager, and it was barely audible when the city manager said, "The courts." They're to go to the courts if they can't get any answer from the city manager. Number three, make sure your tone of voice is friendly and sincere. Number four, honor and act on all requests for action and more information in a timely and courteous manner. For this citizen right here, I have asked, this is the third city council meeting, that's... well, we had breaks. So, the middle of November was the first one that I came to. This is my fifth time asking for clarification on the city policy, and no, this is the sixth time, I take it back, three city meetings and two emails, on the format of keywords and dates. It's the most disrespected I have felt since being yelled at two years ago by Joe Hannan, but at least he apologized for that. Skipping to number seven, in quasi-judicial matters, members will explain at the meeting the reasons for their vote. Can each of you explain why you voted for the city manager candidate that was chosen? Will you be able to tell us? Was he your frontrunner? Did you choose him? Now, the last thing is speaking on other things as I mentioned earlier. The mayor stated that the council needs to do more policymaking and not so much in the details of personnel. I added this last bit after your first initial speaking. I disagree to an extent that when our city administration ends up in as much turmoil as we have been in, it is imperative that the city council intervene and do the job they were elected to do, and thus to keep our city running smoothly and productively. The council is not just a yes-man, no-man board, it's a council that is supposed to stand up for its citizens when it's needed, the staff when they have exhausted all avenues of resolution, and for our city when its face with blocks is so big, we face the danger of losing our city insurance coverage and having to go with being self-insured. Now, I'm sure that it's difficult to have someone like me or Mr. Knight Dunn come up here and say these things over and over again, but it is our right as citizens in this community to come up here and for five minutes, speak about whatever it is that we would like to speak about. And if someone so nicely donates their time so that way someone can speak a little bit longer, well, this is the time that we're given to give you our thought process on what it is, and you shouldn't fear what we say. And you shouldn't call us names for coming up here because you're afraid or you don't like the things we say, or because we make you uncomfortable. That's your job. You were elected to come up here and serve the citizens, and you will not embarrass us. I can't even anymore. It's so disrespectful.
All right, and I'm afraid I'm going to butcher the first name, but Gibson is the last name. I'm sorry.
It's been Richard Navoli.
What is your first name?
My first name is Staris. Last name is Gibson, my address is 2355 East Burnwood. For one, I have a two-month-old baby, a betting company, and my twin, Erin, who's about five years old. So we stuck in full class as much as possible, and probably not to use my full five minutes. So, I'm just going to read you some facts, and then I'll be done. Facts: The district attorney sees and reports on wrongdoing. The jury sees and detects on wrongdoing. Newburgh Dundee Police Department police see and reports on wrongdoing. The Oregon State Police sees and reports on wrongdoing. Local retired attorney, Michael Gunn, sees and writes on possible wrongdoing. Newburgh Dundee citizens seize and recognize wrongdoing. The Newburgh City Council is the only entity of persons or persons involved who refuse to acknowledge wrongdoing, taking a stance, making a public comment, demanding answers, forcing a change, nothing from the council but silence and complete and total inaction. The city of Newburgh has four pending report claims from four city employees. Does that not make it clear that the city administration, HR, city attorney, and city manager all need to be replaced, or is it time that the city of Newburgh will call the council and the mayor? The sexual harassment, the hostile work environment, the retaliation, the cover-up, that's ridiculous. As a survivor of sexual abuse when I was nine years old, and then again when I was twenty-one years old by my kid's sperm donor, that is ridiculous that any kind of sexual harassment would ever happen in the city council and not be investigated and not be taken care of. What I think really needs to happen there is I think you should form a council of citizens who really don't like you. You know why? Because that would cause honesty and integrity. Because when you aren't being watched and the council is not being watched, then are you guys going to do what's right? Because from right now, 2019 to 2017, you haven't done what is right. This is the beginning here, literally, we're six days in, and we're having a wonderful city council meeting. That's awesome. What's really awesome is that we can come together and that I can share my opinion, and that you can, well, of course, for the next two minutes and thirty-two seconds, solicit my opinion, but I really think we can move on this year. It's not a recall, but we should be able to do, we should be able to listen to people like Michael Gunn and Rebecca Wallace, and we're going to take it, not just with the grain of salt, but we're going to give it to you in the spoon hole and say, "You know what? You're wrong, and this is where we're going, and this is what we're going to do." What integrity is, what I was taught what integrity is, is doing what is right when no one is watching. And that's why I still met kids, whether it is up here or not. Twins go absolutely different directions, one is tall, one is short, doesn't matter. What happens is, I'm here and my kids are listening, and I was trying to explain to them what integrity and what less is, and what cowardly is. And Brian, who's the two-minute-something twin, Brian said, "So, cowardly, is that not a bully?" And I'm like, you know what? Bullies are cowardly, because they keep pushing people and pushing people, and they don't think they're going to stand up. But really, we are standing up, and we're not going to have it anymore.
Thank you very much. Okay, we may, we may go a little off script here for a second, something new maybe for the new year. Staff, if you have anything that you'd like to address from the public comments to council, that would be appreciated. Again, just just from staff to the council.
Now, if there's anything you want us to follow up on during the issue tracker, I'm happy to get that down and follow up. I don't think we have any response to anything that's supposed to happen at this age.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item nine, the consent calendar.
I don't have mics, I'm a lot... Mr. Murray, do we accept the consent calendar?
Second by a listen. All in favor... All in favor, it goes to discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Close same sign. Very number, consent counter passed. All right, moving on to item number ten. Now, actually, let's take a five-minute break while we, it looks like we've got a few public comments, so let's take five minutes. Okay, there hasn't been any suggestion from the council that we do want to first conclude public comment, and secondly, to thank you for it, and thank you for coming this evening. Thank you. We'll bring the meeting to the floor.
I just think we're really just working on, like, because I'm doing a session, uh, six or seven hours, but I have my time to talk to you, just let's let me show this going with you.
Yeah, yeah, just say just next, and she'll just go ahead and move it for you. Um, I think some of the...
What policy? In particular?
Hi, Annie, how are you?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I want to sit up there, but it's not, I kind of work in the work.
What's the policy?
Oh, my God. It's a hard weekend.
I smell like bacon.
I love bacon.
It's so freaking epic.
Hey.
Actually, that's the odd thing, but it's...
Um, my big face just got in it too.
The idea of putting in a list of, on a post office or a library. But it's not that people actually want to be in it.
It says that it's taken this, and then it's taken...
I feel like that'd work right now.
Somebody got the last one, oh, well, you have to keep the block, has to get an extra one.
It's also good, too, which is kind of interesting, is to put up with the wrong.
Sad, sad.
That's a good mom to bring her kids here. I love that.
Yeah, I think I bet her, yeah.
I gotta, I gotta trick my mom into doing this now.
Do it. I will.
Yeah, to say it's bad, it's great, it's good.
Absolutely. It is chilly in here, but I must wear it like it is.
Look for pottery bars.
I don't know, but I'm glad you said that was rain, because I didn't know which one
it was, which.
Still can't tell.
I know you're hair, do you always wear it?
Or is that how I should remember?
Want to do all these words, but I have those red.
You wear red?
Oh, yeah, neither.
I never got to know which one was which, smaller, bigger.
I have a student, smaller.
All right, go find her.
I have a quick one there.
Let's go to the process, or something like, we have it still on by door.
Sure, yeah, so you could do the...
The mic is just on that side.
Yeah, I actually can.
Let's go to the process, or something like, we have it still on by door.
Sure, yeah, so you could do the...
The mic is just on that side.
All right, councilors.
All right, let's bring this meeting back into session, and we're now on item ten, ten eight, the resolution authorizing acquisition right-of-way easements for East Crestview Drive Improvement Project. And Brett, is that you?
That's me.
All right.
Did you hear in the back, folks? No?
A little closer.
How's that?
A little better?
Is that better? Okay.
All right. We'll do. So, good evening, Mayor and councilors. It's a matter of giving an update on the Crestview Drive project. We're on a design phase on this project for some time now, and then we're gonna actually get an update and actually pause for some questions.
Sorry, having trouble hearing in the back, and I'm really interested in the...
All right, okay, all right, let's see.
I can try cleaning it up, it might, it might buzz a little. There are some seats up front, too.
All right, Brett, let's try it again.
All right, does this sound a little better?
Yeah, a little bit.
A little higher. How's that? Okay. Just go.
Pretty close to like that, all right.
So this project is on East Crestview Drive. Currently, the existing roadway, part of its gravel, shown in this picture. There's other areas of poor pavement condition. Sidewalks don't exist on the north side. Bike lanes don't exist. This isn't a major collector designation. On the south side, there are sidewalks for some portions of it, but most, most of those are in poor condition and don't exist for most of that location. The priority or the main part of this project that comes about with this project and towards when this is completed is addressing public interest and connectivity of sidewalks, bike lanes, and pavement maintenance. So the project's allocation area, this is between East Crestview Drive, between Springbrook Roundabout, and the county line of northeast Crestview Drive. This is the role doing improvements on this part of this project. It's going to include a mini roundabout along the intersection of Westlake Loop. This is the rest of the improvements that we have, additional street lighting, bike lane connections, utility locations, that's undergrounding of overhead power lines. We have stormwater replacement along heater, that's to go over the lines so it can actually accommodate some stormwater from the project. Currently, the section of roadway is under county jurisdiction, so we'll be starting the process. We got to do some negotiations and start that process to get the transfer of, done to the city jurisdiction. The northeast Crestview Drive will remain a part of this project as a impact, but other than there are utilities, we'll be placing through that. This is an overview of the project. This is an exhibit, a roadmap that we had at Open House on December eleventh. This is the second Open House we had for this project. It doesn't include refinements from the roadmap that was presented at the first Open House on January July. The west end of the project includes a reused waterline that extends into Springbrook Roundabout, and at the east end of the project extends wastewater and a reused waterline through the county portion of the road and back down towards the south, which will connect into utilities that will be brought up from the Crestview Crossing Unit Development Project. One of the things to point out, that when this project is completed, as well as the East Crestview, or Crestview Crossing Project, will provide connectivity of sidewalks, bike lanes, and the roadway to ninety-nine, where the bike lanes that connect and sidewalks connect to get connectivity that'll take it from Springbrook through this route down towards the golf course. Some trails are available there. This is a typical cross-section of a major collector. This is what our standards that we're designing towards and moving forward with this project. We have the main in each direction, bike lanes both sides, planer strips, the sidewalks. This is a little more blow-up of the area, what's happening with the details of the construction and design. Stormwater finders are represented there. Other developments in the city were required to deal with our stormwater, really, purpose area that we add to this project. The street trees are shown, planer strips. This section of roadway currently has right-ofway, and so we're building in the right-ofway wherever we can. But as we go continue, there's some sections where we're not able to stay within the right-ofway improvements that are needed. And as the right-ofway tapers, it starts out wider at Springbrook Roundabout and moves to the, as it goes to the east, the right-ofways being reduced, and what happens is we've actually get to take our sidewalks rather than a planer strip and a setback sidewalk we're needing to bring those driveways across the properties, uh, to, starting at, these were existing residents, and where the right-ofway is, we're actually bringing the sidewalk closer to be a curped type sidewalk, so we can maximize the distance between the driveway, for the driveways, between the garages and the right-ofway. And as we get farther along towards the middle section of the road improvements, the right-ofway gets more consistent, pretty curb lines, and we bring the curped type sidewalk back to the planners and a setback sidewalk at Libra Street. And this detail shows again, the stormline going or just going, shows the stormline improvements down Libra. This also shows the mini roundabout. This is an area where we do have some right-ofway acquisitions, which we even talked about later. That roundabout design does include amenable, truck, and traversable center island as well as all the splitter islands. And the splitter islands and the amenable, traversable, the splitter islands and center island allow for larger trucks, fire emergency vehicles, fire trucks, delivery trucks, involves motorhomes and larger vehicles towing trailers to make the turning movements through that intersection. And this is another blow-up of the area, it's where we'll be putting in the wastewater and reuse water lines to connect into the utilities coming up from the Crestview Crossing Project. Those utilities that will, the water and wastewater, wastewater and reuse water will be dry utilities that will not be in service until such time as we're able to bring in the connection, connection happens with the Crestview Crossing Project. This is a blow-up of the mini roundabout area, and the areas where we do have, we went through a number of iterations, our consultants really worked to try to fit this into the existing right-ofway. These yellow lines on each corner, the black lines, that's the amount of right-ofway that's needed on the north side, a little bit more than what we do on the south. Pretty much? Yeah, it's not much at all in reality. And any general questions on the project?
Yes. I'm a little confused by the driveway, um, the right-ofway driveway issue toward the roundabout.
That the roundabout, so?
Well, the, you, the right-ofway moved and the sidewalk moved, and I was looking at the map, and I couldn't quite figure out...
Oh.
Yeah, the, the blue boxes on...
Yeah, let me...
Yeah, I was just trying to figure, I was, if you could explain to me, like, okay, so I'm backing out of my driveway, okay? I'm, I'm going to worry about the sidewalk, right? But then I'm also going to worry about traffic coming, and I'm assuming this is going to be a fairly highly-traveled road.
It's, it's major collectors, so at least the traffic on it, yeah.
So, with the way this is configured, how is that all going to work?
Well, that's part of what we're going to, why we went to the curped type sidewalks in there, it maximizes that driveway length, so somebody has the ability to back out there and watch the traffic and to back out accordingly. So it's not typically a new construction scenario with a major collector who would not have driveways on to the roadway. This is how we work, doing the best we can to accommodate the conditions we have.
Okay. And then, the second question, if I might. Um, I, this, I think there's a street tree at the corner of Libra and Crestview, um, that's put there right in front of a driveway? That, there's one street tree all by itself, and, yeah, that one right there. And it's right next to the driveway, and I thought, if this is a major collector and you have an intersection, and now you're going to put a street tree there that's going to block vision?
You're having a comment that's very much similar to one we're having in the review in the comments.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's some adjustments. The street trees are going to act, and as we move through, do some verification things. Along that lines, also, we are, we have our, this whole kind of project, we just have a report that's going to show trees that are existing, will be found, going down, maybe to be for impacts or how it will work with the construction.
And, we've had a lot of information come at us this week, so if this isn't a staff report, I apologize. I'm, um, I'm looking at that roundabout, and I know what's off Springbrook, and I know where this is going to pop out on ninety-nine. Is that roundabout, are we concerned about the amount of traffic, and, I'm talking, you know, three to five years down the road? Are you, are we going to weight limit this road? What's, what's kind of the overall plan?
Without weight limiting the road, that's...
The rightaway driveway issue toward the roundabout.
At the roundabout itself?
Well, the rightaway moved and the sidewalk moved. I was looking at the map and couldn't quite figure out...
Oh.
Yeah, the blue boxes on...
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure...
I'll go back here.
If you could explain to me, like, okay, so I'm backing out of my driveway, okay? I'm going to worry about the sidewalk, right? But then I'm also going to worry about traffic coming. And I'm assuming this is going to be a fairly highly-traveled road.
It's a major collector, so at least the traffic on it, yeah.
So with the way this is configured, how is that all going to work?
Well, that's part of what we're going to, why we went to the curped type sidewalks in there. It maximizes that driveway length so somebody has ability to back out there and watch the traffic and to back out accordingly. So it's not typically a new construction scenario with a major collector who would not have driveways on to the roadway. This is how we work, doing the best we can to support the conditions we have.
Okay. And then the second question, if I might. This, I think there's a street tree at the corner of Libra and Crestview that's put there right in front of a driveway. There's one street tree all by itself. And, yeah, that one right there. And it's right next to the driveway. And I thought, if this is a major collector and you have an intersection and now you're going to put a street tree there that's going to block vision?
You're having a comment that's very much similar to one we're having in reviewing the plans.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's some adjustments. The street trees are going to act as we move through and do some verification things. Along that lines also, we have our list of this whole kind of projects. We just have the report that's going to show trees that are existing that need to come down from the future impacts or how it will work with the construction.
And we've had a lot of information come at us this week, so if this isn't the staff report, I apologize. I'm... I'm looking at that roundabout and I know what's off Spring Brook. And I know where this is going to pop out on 99. Is that roundabout, are we concerned about the amount of traffic? And I'm talking, you know, three to five years down the road. Are you, are we going to weight limit this road? What's kind of the overall plan?
Without weight limiting the road, that's not even, you know, some of the design or the guy that did it, he worked through a pavement design and just received that and might run through that. And they're working out what that set cross-section needs to be to deal with the traffic that's anticipated towards this.
Okay. Because that's the one thing that I was like, hmm, you know, I just see some of the iterations off Spring Brook that happen sometimes with competing sizes of vehicles.
Yeah.
And then I saw this, and then you add in driveways around it. And I was like, uh-huh. Little learnings about that.
Understood. We've been looking at that as well. And then just with that roundabout scenario and the amount, that's one of the reasons it's a close draw. And it's kind of apparent, you know, I'm thinking of smaller mini roundabouts such as this. Gives those larger vehicles, they can traverse those elements. They can just slow down, which does have the traffic coming at the time. It is traffic will need to slow down coming through this.
Are you expecting trucks to come through this area?
It's likely to do. There's delivery trucks, emergency vehicles. In fact, yeah, we've had conversations with the residents and confirming that the residents of West Lake Loop has a large motorhome. That's one of the things we've updated to make sure that we'd be able to get through the intersections as well. Thank you.
Other questions, folks? Brett, how long has this project been in the works, do you know?
Decades, as I understand.
Decades? And this is only the portion, not including the portion closer to 99 and such?
Correct. Yeah, this goes just from, this is the east, from Spring Brook Road to the county line.
Quick comment. When I was appointed to city council, I had three people going, "What are you going to pave our road?" And that was, what, three and a half years ago? So, yeah, thank you for this.
Any other questions of Brett, folks? All right. And the staff recommendation, then if you're...
No, no. They were, because you have more stuff, you have more stuff.
I have a little more stuff.
All right, good.
Basically, it's a matter of showing where we do need rightaway is at. It's actually, like I mentioned, it's the roundabout before corners, as we showed there. There actually, the green arrow points to the point where we start transitioning to... This location here, this is a property on this entire country. We do need some rightaway for that's about two feet roughly. And then also a PUE at that location. So basically, going to recommendations, this is the first step of going into negotiations. It's recommended the council adopt a resolution 2020-3633, authorizing the acquisition of rightaway easements to East Crestview Drive improvement project.
All right, discussion, folks?
Uh... I think...
Does it?
Could I just add, just for clarity? The way this resolution is drafted, this would authorize condemnation proceedings to give, in the event that negotiations were unsuccessful. So the council should be aware that that is part of what's being asked of you today.
And Brett, what is the largest amount of land that a property owner, you have to know?
I don't have the numbers worked out as to be the property with the green arrow that has the largest amount. Again, that's about two feet for the distance across the property is a couple hundred feet, so.
Listen.
Do we know, like, how are property owners reacting at this point? Do we know? I assume you've been in contact with them.
Yeah, the property owner's been made aware where the rightaway acquisitions are needed. And so far, the amount of rightaways is not, not been imposed as an issue at this point. So we've not started any kind of formal negotiations. That's the point of having this action, for this place to actually start that. They've been aware, it's been presented out of the open house.
All right, anything else, folks? All right, and I think we've heard the staff recommendation?
I thought you were in.
Okay. I made your recommendation that we adopt resolution 2020-3633, authorizing the acquisition of rightaway easements for the East Crestview Drive improvement project.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. All right, opposed, same sign. Fair enough, resolution passes. All right, moving along. Item 10B, information on establishing a construction excise tax. Mr. Rex?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Dr. Rex, Community Development Director. So tonight, we kind of give you a briefing of where we're at with the evaluation of a potential for a construction excise tax. So in the 2016 Oregon legislative session, they passed Senate Bill 1533, which allowed local governments to implement a construction excise tax. And the tax is directed towards addressing issues about housing affordability. You may be aware, school districts have a construction excise tax that they're imposed, but up until 2016, local governments did not have that same capability. So if we go back, for those of you who were here, for those who were not here, back in December 2017, there had been a year-long group of about 40 stakeholders within the community who were meeting on a monthly basis and talking about housing affordability issues. That was then brought forward in the fall to a series of work sessions and discussions. And finally, in December, there was a final proposal that was brought forward by the Housing Newberg Group. One of the items that was identified was the potential for a construction excise tax. And actually, the council had asked the Housing Newberg Group, "What are your four top priorities?" So in the report, it was given that the RT and annexations and UGVs, it was accessory dwelling units, and another one of the four was this construction excise tax. So if we move forward, we went through the first two programs, brought those forward to council for consideration. So we've spent the last year working on the construction excise tax. So we've been meeting with the Affordable Housing Commission. So we started off by doing the research, who within the state of Oregon has imposed a construction excise tax or not? And there were 10 communities that have done that. The earliest was the city of Van Buren. This legislation, they used a different model. The rest have come after, basically, the legislation was adopted. So they were in 2017 and 2018. And there's information in your packet that gives you the date that each of those communities adopted their program. There is some misconception about what the tax would be imposed on. So I want to make sure we were clear, because it's completely stated in statute. It would be only on new residential structures or new additional square footage to an existing residential structure. There were some misnomers that, oh, I came in and needed to get a mechanical permit to fix my furnace, or if I was remodeling my bathroom and I needed plumbing permitted, that this construction excise tax would be imposed. It's only on new construction. And that's the residential side. There's a parallel, and that's for the commercial and industrial. And as the legislation indicates, it also includes mixed-use development. And again, it applies to new structures or additional square footage to an existing structure, which includes if you were remodeling and adding a living space, you know, commercial or industrials, and you might have a night watchman. You didn't have one, but you needed a night watchman, so you did an addition. That would be subject to a construction excise tax, unless you exempted it. So there are a whole series of exemptions that are listed out in the statute. So high school improvements, public improvements, and so those are things like transportation. As you just saw, school district, so building new buildings and so forth. They are not subject to a construction excise tax. CPRD, if they were building a new aquatic center, where we have one, it would not be subject to a construction excise tax. The third one is dealing with residential housing. It's guaranteed to be affordable at 8% of the area median income and for that period of 60 years. And so that is if a developer is bringing forward a project that met all of these requirements, they would not have to pay a construction excise tax. Public or private hospital improvements. So Providence is an example, would not be subject. Religious facilities primarily used for worship. So church facilities would be exempt. Now, that's for the patient or a portion where you're conducting services on Sunday, you know, classrooms, if a church was putting housing. Again, then it would be unless there are exemptions. So I'll give you some of that. Agricultural buildings, again, this is directly out of statute. Nonprofit corporations. And this, you have to, you've got an A, B, or C. So long-term care facilities, which has the definition, residential care facilities and continuing care retirement communities. And so the last one actually applies to friends here. They fall into that category as well. So the Affordable Housing Commission looked at each one of these. So in any local ordinance you adopt, you have to comply with these. Aren't exempt from paying the construction excise tax. But the Affordable Housing Commission looked at some other alternatives because they were looking at the models. And so out of the, when we started, there were nine. We chose not to look at Portland because it's very different than Newburgh. But we looked at it and we actually used the city of Hood River as kind of the base model. And then we looked at all of the others that had access to that information. And so as they were looking through that, they came up with some additional things for consideration to be exempt. And so they had come up with this kind of generic one. Any improvements are exempt on the construction, under state laws. And it kind of goes back up to the previous list. Any improvements by the Bay construction excise tax that's dedicated to affordable housing? And it would be limited to the investment that the city could put into that. So if you have a developer here who's doing a project, there were funds through a program such as DES, and there were negotiations, and there was an opportunity to get a couple of affordable units that were 80% of the median family income, then the portion for those two units would not pay the construction excise tax, but the other units in that department would. Non-living space, and so this is kind of correlation to the agricultural. They were talking about shop buildings. So if you have a large lot and you want to put a shop in the back and you want to park your car in your RV and so forth, Affordable Housing Commission said, no, you wouldn't pay the construction excise tax. Accessory dwelling units, accessory farm dwelling units, seasonal farm worker housing, temporary hardship dwellings. We really don't have the temporary hardship dwellings. That's more from county regulations. But we do have accessory dwelling units. We are in a situation, we still have agricultural activities occurring within city limits, so you could have some agricultural buildings. And we had conversations in the past, part of the Housing Newberg, about farm worker housing. Then the next one was an improvement. It has a total improvement value of less than $100,000. And so this one was discussed under, if I had a home and I was adding a bedroom, so I'm adding a 10 by 10 or a 10 by 12 bedroom. And if that project was less than print value of $100,000, you would not pay the construction excise tax. And then they talked about a partial exemption, a 50%. If you did deed restrictions on a project that is falls into the category workforce housing, that's from 81% to 120% of median family income. And there's been a lot of conversation, when we get to the questions, about the length of time. So different examples we looked at was for 50 years. But the Affordable Housing Commission talked about, well, should that be 15 years? It could be 20 years or 25. It's nothing prescribed in the statute. So there's some flexibility. So we have a question later about what that number might look like. We also did public outreach. And so contacted developers within the community and shared with them an early version of what the commission had been developing. And one of the common themes that came out of that, the summaries of those meetings are in your packet tonight, was not a construction excise tax, but what about a general obligation bond? So those discussions were, well, shouldn't everybody pay towards the issue of housing affordability? But then the conversations went to, will not everybody pay under a bond? Because you still have taxes and properties. So the biggest one you can think of, it would be University for Fox. They don't pay the property taxes. So they've gone back and forth and had a lot of discussion about that. But, you know, how do you do something that everybody has to pay for? Then we had conversations with the Home Builders Association as well. And they've raised the question about vesting system development charge rates. And so here is, if you were building a single-family home, in order to get your building permit, you have to pay your system development charges, transportation, sewer water, and storm. The home builders has asked for, well, could you vest your rights? So let's say a developer came in and was doing a 25-lot subdivision. The day that they bring the application in, it locks in the SDC charge because it may take a year or two in order to build the subdivision, and then you start building the houses. Well, each year in our program is that our SDCs are indexed in Seattle Engineering News Records, so they go up every April 1st. And so there'll be stuff coming before you in April on our master fee schedule. But locking that in at the time that you submit your land use application and then locking it in for a four- to five-year period. In those conversations, we indicated, well, that has some issues on the city and its capital improvement programs because we're losing that inflationary value over that four- to five-year period. So a lot of these discussions happened after the last Affordable Housing Commission meeting. It started just before, we raised the issue, but we had several more discussions. And then another one was the timing of when to pay the SDCs. And so one of the thoughts was, well, defer paying your SDCs until you get a final for your building. So this is focused more on housing. We've shared back some concerns from experience is a developer builds a home, the home sells, they're ready to close escrow as soon as they get the final. And everybody wants it to happen, you know, that one day. And under that particular scenario is, well, that might be problematic because we've got to go to the developer, they've got to come in and pay, they may have to go to their lender to get a drawdown on their construction loan. And so all of a sudden, that could put the purchaser in a difficult situation. So we backed up, so, well, might there be an earlier date that could occur? So part of this issue is the carrying costs. And so when you have to pay your SDCs upfront, that fits into the financing package for development. If you can pull that out and delay it, then it restructures the financing. So again, we don't have answers. We're just raising the questions that have been brought up with that. The revenue. So in some very early, if I go back several years, people were kind of looking at what our permit values were. And we do have tables and shows at all. But again, it doesn't take out all of the exemptions. And it wasn't necessarily following what the law said. And so we started to drill down, drill down, drill down. So the committee looked at the possibility, could you do a .33 construction excise tax? Could you do a .5? Could you do a 1%? The maximum you can do on residential is 1%. On commercial, you could go higher than 1%. There's not a statutory limitation. So the Affordable Housing Commission has kind of looked at, for the residential side, 1% and on the commercial and industrial side, 1%. So what we did is we backed up and said, well, if we were trending, as we have been the last few years, right around 100 single-family homes and all things being equal, the permit value for that home, structural, mechanical, plumbing, and so forth, was $300,000, that would be a tax of $3,000 that would have to be paid in order to get your building permit. So part of the community conversation, well, now we're increasing the cost of housing by an additional $3,000. We tried to look at the issue of commercial and industrial. And it's episodic, and I think it's important to note is apartments are considered commercial development. They're not single-family or duplex. not single-family or duplex. So, anything where you get three or more units on our code is considered an apartment project. So, it's episodic, and so, we're trying to glean out of our permit software system, and look over the last several years, I don't know if I'm going to get all four, because we've got legacy data that converted, and it's a little harder to pull out of the system. But try to go back and look at a couple of years and say, okay, if you did a 1% on residential, what would that look like? With all these potential interventions, and what's the true number? So, we're kind of starting with a base, and you might be able to create about 300,000 all year, if you're just looking at residential on a permit value of 300,000. Now, we have some homes that are higher than 300, and we have some homes that are lower than 300 on the permit value. Let's not talk about what the real market, what the sale value, do different things. So, with the commission, we looked at, then we'll say, well, the 1%, what would be, by statute, this broken out, what would be the administration fee? Administration, it's a maximum, set the statute is 4%, so that would be about 12,000 of that 300,000. Then, it's broken down to developer incentives, and again, since statute, it's 50%, that's about 144,000. Housing community services, so 15% of the fees that are collected go back to the state for the first-time home buyer program. And then, there's one that's for programs and incentives, but it's again related to housing, and so, that's 35%. So, that's kind of a breakdown of the scenario, if you looked at 1% and the 300,000 dollar permit value. There are other tables in your packet that show you something, what it looks like on the revenue generation. Thinking of all the permit values, that's why I said, I've still got to drill down a little bit deeper, and the commission is asking to do that. So, there's some questions for consideration, and then there are a number of options. I tried to capture between what we've heard at commission meetings, developer discussions, from our House Bill 4006 community meeting, that we recently had in December, where comments were kind of mixed, no, you shouldn't do a construction excise tax, you should do a general obligation bond, to the other part saying, no, you should do a construction excise tax. So, one of the questions that the commission has asked is, what the split is between residential versus commercial? And so, I've gone to the 10 community, or looked at the communities who have been implementing this program, and went into their budgets to see what they've generated for revenue. Well, I can find the whole number, but I can't find the drill down and the separation of the difference between residential and commercial, so I'm in the process of getting hold of the cities, trying to give you that data. The other question was, the other community's collecting, so you have, is one of the attachments, the information I was able to gather. The question about should improvements that add additional square footage but have a permit value less than 100,000, should those be exempt? That was my example of doing a 10 by 10 or 10 by 12 addition for a bedroom. I'll just kind of run through these, and then we can go back. On the partial exemption, I raised the question about the 50 years, and so, as the commission talked about, should that be 15 years, or 20 years, or 25 years, or 30 years? Some feedback that I received from the development community, 50 years is a long time. There's a decision that has to be made for the portion to implement in the program on the commercial industrial, you have to make a decision that 100% of that goes to the affordable housing program, and that's actually a good thing to implement. The, for commercial industrial, they identify the 1% CTE, statute allows one, out more than one, looking at other communities, there are one. So, again, kind of paralleling what other communities have done around the state in doing this evaluation. The effective date, there's an implementation that needs to occur. So, I put in your material, typically, if you were to adopt an ordinance, it goes into effect 30 days after the adoption. But there's some ramp-up, we need to, we need to work with our vendor for our permit software, because we're going to have to put new stuff in. Are we going to implement this internally, with staff, or not? Or do we need some additional staffing? And we've talked about staffing issues around housing in several meetings. And so, I kind of threw some dates out, you know, 30 days, that's being pretty much a rush, there's some ramp-up for information, education to developers about it, might have more appropriate, A, B, July 1st of 2020, if we go into a new budget. We've had some conversations with the housing authority, who administers programs for affordable housing, might we be able to get into an intergovernmental agreement with them in order to administer the program for us? Would the $12,000 estimated be enough for them to do that administration? Don't know yet, maybe it's been going through some changes out there, so that's an additional There was another portion of the proposed ordinance dealing with repayment. And so, this is one where, if you were a development, and you were putting in units that were deed restricted, at 80% or less of the median family income, but that owner sold it, and there was no deed restriction, and all of a sudden, they change and say, no, we're going to go market rate, should they have to pay back construction excise tax dollars? And so, again, there's a toggle between, do you do the deed restrictions or not? If you don't do the deed restrictions, but they do affordable, but the ownership changes, saying this a little bit different way, and they didn't have to pay construction excise tax on a couple of units, should they have to pay back? Installment payments, and so, when we looked at other examples, is that you could do 20 semi-annual payments, so that's basically taking 10 years to pay your construction excise tax. And so, Finance Director and I've had a conversation about, you know, is it a flexible rate? Is it a fixed rate? Again, that's probably something, you'll get some feedback from you, they need to go back to the Affordable Housing Commission and have a conversation. The, as I noted in Section 3.60 under the draft, the revenue, should the deed restriction be 50 years, or some other limitation? The one provisioned in there, about 80% of lots that the median was federal, that was fixed. But the other one, you might pick 20 years. So, there's a lot of information. Now, the purpose of tonight is to brief you, and to get feedback from you, you're not asked to make any decision. I will take the information back, and we'll have another conversation with the Affordable Housing Commission, or several conversations if we need to, before we come back to an official proposal for your consideration. Questions?
Thank you for this presentation. I suppose, my biggest question is, do we have already an idea of how we're going to use the funds beyond just affordable housing, right? Do we have, or is that part of what the goal of this is to establish? Just start kind of getting funds so that we can start working on that? And that's, I guess that's kind of where the, it's like a chicken and egg type of situation, and I'm having trouble figuring out which one comes first.
So, actually, so, in the draft, under Section 3.60100, has a piece on use of revenues. And so, I had on the slides, it's the breakdown, you know, the 15% going to Oregon Housing Community Services, 50%, developer incentive, 35%, other incentives. You go to the next level, which is down to Section C, in statute, it says, we can include, but it's not limited to, we can write down system development charges, we could write down land acquisition for the partnership, we could pay for public improvements, so there might be some sewer water, something of that nature. So, it would become a partnership, and there would have to be a contract, and it would have to be dealt for that. You can also, by statute, you can do some rent buy downs and subsidies with the revenues generated, you can do a down payment assistance program with the revenues generated, and you could work on foreclosure prevention assistance. So, it's laid out of what you can and can't do. Of course, you can't do anything if you don't have the money. So, that's the chicken or the egg. So, even, I mean, and the commission talked about this, if you did a 1% and you went through a full year, and let's say, we had no commercial industrial development, we had no multifamily development, all we had was a year of single-family homes, roughly, you know, about 300,000. Is that enough in the first year to be able to partner with a developer on a project? It may not be, it may take several years to generate, you might be able to do some of these other programs of maybe, I don't know, assistance on a down payment or foreclosure, but actual investment into a project and a partnership, I think you're going to need to build up some funds to be able to do that.
However, it may, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, then, the, just kind of making sure my understanding is correct, so then, the second part of this is, not only are we trying to generate revenue, but we're also trying to incentivize developers to say, you won't have to pay these if you did build just straight up the affordable housing that was designated that way for 60 years or whatever.
And so, yeah, so if you had a developer that came in, I mean, currently, since my time here, is the only organization who's doing building housing that meets that 80% or less of affordability is Habitat. Everything else tends at a market rate. So, I recently had to prepare information to submit to the state, and did survey work with the developers, different topic again, but looking at their products, and what their price points are for their product. And kind of the low end of the range is, thinking of one of the skinny houses with a single-car garage and three-bedroom, and it's about 1,400 square feet to 1,500 square feet, is in that 340,000 range. So, I was up there looking, and our median family income went up, went from 81,400 to 87,900. Is that, using last year's 2018 type numbers, is a family of four could only afford a house of 275,000? So, even the market right now is not building a product that gets to that 80%, let alone 50% or 30%. So, that's the challenge, we're saying, and so, I do talk with developers, and developers will understand, and get the affordability issue, the land costs, labor costs, material costs, permit costs, and so forth, all factor into the cost that they have.
Other questions? Doug, just one comment on, you know, the building up the reserve. You know, as you mentioned, Habitat currently, so we've got it so that it can be up to two homes per year, for which SDCs are waived. I mean, part of, part of this, I imagine, is how do you backfill those SDCs in order to provide that incentive? So, theoretically, anyway, it would seem to me that, you know, if you're, again, the number of 100 or 300,000 dollars brought in in a year, 144,000 that could be provided to developers, so in theory, anyway, you could provide incentives to developers for to buy houses per year, theoretically. And it may not be, and again, it may not be that you get an entire development like this, but you could, again, theoretically have a few houses within a larger development that were deed restricted, and it would have some kind of incentive.
Correct.
So, that's another one, okay? Thank you.
Because that takes, you know, thinking about SDCs and 30,000.
Right.
A unit, and but then, it's finding the right developer to maybe build the products, and going to say, I'm going to take a couple of units of my development, deed restricted for whatever time horizon is established, and, oh, can you pay my SDC for that? So, yes, very.
Other questions?
So, Doug, are you looking at technical questions, or just overall? I'm trying to figure out how deep you're looking.
You can, you can stay as high or as deep as you want to. I think now's a good time to ask questions, it gives me some time to go back and do some additional research, if you have some detailed questions.
So, I guess, I'm going at this a little bit. My first thought, after reading this, and I read all the developer comments, and read some other stuff, you know, online, so we're looking at this as a, a program that could potentially offset SDC costs for affordable housing. That's one of the ways, that's one of the tools, right?
One of the possibilities.
Okay. So, are we going to have a mechanic, a mechanism to where we also look at like our next master planning process, that we make sure affordable housing is one of the lenses that we look at those projects through?
Well, now, you're talking about inclusionary housing provisions, and the state law was changed that doesn't allow that. I can say, I've talked with my colleagues around the state about that particular statutory provision, and by and large, people find it troubling, and if it would be workable or not. So, I think, maybe council's one way to step back, and I wrote in the report, when we started off with the housing, we had nine ideas, and then there were six to watch, and as we moved forward over the last few years, the list has grown to 36, and I have another proposal that's coming to you to address the issue of that, I think, correct, is 37 now. And there is no one silver bullet that addresses this issue at all. It's, it's thinking about your work session, particularly, you know, what things can we do? And so, council directed me to work on the first four, this is one of those first four, then we'll be back in front of you with the long list to say, what would you like us to do on next?
So, reading the developer comments, not a lot of positive there, and I was just curious, are we also thinking about how to mitigate some of that concern, how to address some of those concerns, or is this just basically, we're doing it, get out, because what I'm worried about is that the council passes a construction excise tax, the development community gets upset, they have the home builders come in, get signatures, prove on the ballot, and it either fails or it passes, but that's my concern, is the politics of it. I'm looking at that, and I see a lot of dollar signs, you know, developers, and I worry that what we put into place isn't going to, we need to at least address some of their concerns, I guess, is what I'm saying, like, you know, just because, I think just to do it, ask their opinion, and then do it anyway, is not a real good strategy.
So, what has occurred so far is to have the discussion with them, to get their input and feedback, and that is then brought back to the Affordable Housing Commission for their consideration. And so, the Affordable Housing Commission will bring forward a recommendation to you. My role in this is, I'm not taking side right or left, is providing facts and the data, let your commission chew on it, they have for a year, before they formulate an official recommendation, the last meeting, they were at, do a 1% construction excise tax on residential and a commercial industrial, as you kind of see in your draft proposal, so that's kind of where they're at now. But again, they had a couple of questions that were out there that were unanswered, and I'm trying to answer, and they didn't have full advantage of the ongoing conversations we're having with Home Builders Association. So, got to come back to them later this month, the 28th, and share that. Now, thinking forward to your question is, if there's a recommendation that comes out of the Affordable Housing Commission, and it's a recommendation to adopt something, it could be, one of the comments that you made tonight is, well, if that's what happens, then you can do another round of outreach with the developers in the community, and let them know what's being, will be brought forward to the council for their consideration. Say, is it going to adopt anything? For you guys to consider. So, there may be a little bit more back and forth that might need to occur as an educational piece, or to get another round. I will say, the conversations I had with single-family developers, would they do an affordable product? I won't say no, but unlikely. And so, part of my comment about building up some money to work with developers is kind of more on the multifamily side of the ledger.
And then, there was also a letter from my Google layer, and while some of it is, you know, slanted, I did like a couple of his questions. One was, you know, the, how is a city going to measure the quantity and effects of the construction excise tax? So, that way, we know whether, you know, what are our milestones, what are our expectations of this thing? Because I think, especially when you're putting, I mean, it's called tax, when you're putting a new tax on people, you want to make sure, at least for me, that you have putting a new tax on people, you want to make sure, at least for me, that you have definite goals and that you're meeting those goals. For example, when we did the transportation utility fee, we put out which streets we're getting paid, and how much we expected to bring in. I would expect something like this to have much the same thing. I know it's a little more difficult, because you don't know what projects are coming, but at least, you know, some sort of measurement of success.
And I think that measurement of success, counselor, maybe more is, what's your target for the number of affordable units that you can give on an annual basis? Because this is one, I don't have streets under this topic to go out and say, "Okay, we got to fix that one, that one." It would be, what land is a developer proposing to develop on, and could we partner with them, and then with the resources we have, how much might it cost to get some affordable units under prescribed deed restriction timeline?
Yeah.
And so that's a lot of dialogue and discussion going back, back and forth.
The last thing I'll bring up is, there was a slide in here, I missed it in the packet all of it, about somebody building a house and then not having it be affordable, and us going back and trying to get the construction excise tax. My concern with that, and I think we've seen this in the transportation utility fee too, is that at some point, the policing of that gets to be staff-heavy, and what I wouldn't want to see is us to create a new position to do this using construction excise tax fees, or it's going to look like an employment project. Or at least politically, it'll look like an employment project, not an actual affordable housing program. And so my recommendation, and this is just me, is keep it as simple as possible. You know, whether that's, you know, and we're talking about delays of paying and all other stuff, I really believe that we should make it as simple as possible, so that way it takes as little staff time as possible, so that way the money goes to what the intended purpose was, which is affordable housing. That was my feedback.
A couple of things. On the developers, this isn't, and this isn't a new theory, they've heard about this for a number of years now, and certainly the Home Builders Association is well aware of this. It's, you know, again, it is passed in legislation, so clearly, Salem felt that it was important enough to put it into legislation. So that's, you know, probably, I guess, the first thing. The other is, the notion of deed restriction is not foreign, it's something that we do all the time, and it's something that's very much a part of the, you know, it's part of the business, is doing this kind of thing. Did you say, Doug, that if it's under 80, it needs to be 50 years then? Is that what the statute says?
That was under... So this one, and this is the exact line you're testing. Residential housing is guaranteed to be affordable under guidelines established by HUD to households that wear no more than 80% of the median household income in the area of construction act proposed, but it's heard to be at least 60 years. And the commission, candidly, you know, they count 60 years. That's a long time, but that's just one type.
Okay. Okay. Because, well, just for what it's worth, and we're seeing a lot more, it had always been 30 years, but it's moving beyond and further. I know affordable housing has now moved to 50 years on most everything, so. But that deed restriction, you know, again, that's a pretty solid way to maintain it. And they're, well, just for what it's worth, that's what they call permanent affordability, is what they're trying to get to. So. Yeah. Stephen?
So I'm new, and a lot of this is way over my head, and call me a social worker, but that's what I am. If we just said no to this, what do you and the developers see for housing for the future? Do we just keep going like this until we've priced ourselves out of any of our, say, city employees being able to live in Newburgh and work here? I mean, I guess, I saw, you know, I was diligent about going through this, and I saw a lot of what the developers said in terms of what I think they were saying were possible alternatives. But I guess my question is, so we say, if we said no to this, what do the developers see as some reasonable solutions? And how do you feel about that? And what do you see as reasonable solutions that would not include this? And where does that lie on the continuum of what's best for affordable housing long-term, and what's best for what we have right now?
Very good question. And a complex, long answer. I'll try to simplify. What we're seeing is a year-over-year increase in housing prices. Wages are not keeping up with housing prices. So that means it becomes less affordable to live here. And we've had conversations in this room, this dais, with past councils about, you know, people moving out of Newburgh because they can go, or they're all going to afford to rent here. We just happened, we have HB 4006, if the mayor attended, and we went up, we went from 28% of our renters were paying 50% or more of their income towards their rent, we went to 28.6%. And so you can see that trend. So it makes it less affordable to be able to live here. Construction costs are not going down. Land costs are not going down. You may remember the housing needs analysis I brought forward, which identified that we have a deficiency in residential land, and that in that proposal was a toggling to go from 70% single-family down to 62 or 63. So that means going towards more multifamily housing. Under the theory, it's more cost-effective. I'm not saying not, don't build single-family homes, but you need other product other than just single-family homes. They would need a land supply to be able to accommodate that. So that may be one way to address. We're hearing more and more and more from the development community about deferring, delaying the time of paying SDCs. That that could help bring down some housing costs. My question always back is, well, how much? And I haven't gotten a specific answer to that. So if you're writing down, you can't do the parks, but if you're doing the sewer water and storm portion of that, does it write down the cost of that house on an equal amount? I haven't gotten an answer to that. Federal dollars are harder to come by, they're more limited. We've had conversations with housing, every housing, about, you know, could we get some of the additional projects in Newburgh to address some of the affordability issues? Again, it's trying to follow the dollars where they go. And I was reading an article this weekend of some areas within the United States that housing costs have gotten escalating so much, the Bay Area is one, that they're starting to see a flattening off, and values are starting to go down, because they're saturated, just people can't afford there, can't afford, so they don't want to necessarily go there and live there, they don't want to buy there, they'll look at another location if they can find the right job and support their family. So it's not just a really quick, easy answer, it's a very complex web. That's why I don't want to come up with a silver bullet in decades.
This is, I kind of have a follow-on to this. So I don't believe a tax is going to save us. I don't believe our current method of building houses, or what we build, or what we call housing, is going to save us. We have to be an absentee citizen, probably four or five, somewhere between. I don't think you're going to move the needle at all in what we're doing, unless we're willing to be brave and do something different, change what we call housing, yeah, for walls, but how we do it has to be different. Because doing what other people have done, that's not working there either, and it's not solving or moving the needle, is really just putting a sticker on the wall and saying, "Oh, we care about affordable housing, boom, we did this." We are the best. And truthfully, we've done almost nothing. If you save one person, or build, help a little bit and buy, you know, five houses, that's not changing, that's not changing outcome that much, to say that we've really done something, in my opinion. And I don't know what the answer is, because like you said, there is no silver bullet, there is no such thing. It's really going to be people being, just breaking it down and doing something different.
So council, it's a part of that, you know, the answers, and so that's what the development community brought forward was, well, would a general obligation gone be a better path to generate the dollars? Then it leads to the question, well, what's the amount? Who's going to go out and do all of the education to the citizenry, the voters, who have to go to? Again, I'm not saying what the answer is, it's just, it's a different path, and it's a different body of work, and a different timeline, trying to address that. But I also go back, I mentioned earlier, you know, kind of the 340, the low end was a product today, is the upper end is in that $700,000. So that's what's being built in Newburgh today. Now, conversations I've had with some developers, with that price point for a rent, for a rent, is, you know, there's a cap, and you start to get up to about $1,500 a month, that's about the max you can charge in Newburgh today, unless you're exceeding the minimum max. So why would you build a product that you don't want a unit to sit there vacant for $1,500 a month? You can do a different product and get it down to $13,000 a pound, and then you can hopefully keep a rent.
One comment on that, yeah, as you said, Doug, you've got 36 items. So as we mentioned, there's no one single answer, or we wouldn't have the problem. But, and another scenario, thinking about this, you know, beyond being a sticker on the wall. Over the last few years, anyway, it's been encouraging to me to hear from employer, encouraging and discouraging, to hear from employers that they're starting to understand the importance of having housing that's affordable in this community. That wasn't the case for many years. It became sort of a moral obligation more than anything else, but they're starting to say that. They can't attract and retain employees. You know, one of the surest ways to have a community start to really atrophy is if you no longer have anyone living there. So I think, just hearing that discussion, hearing some of the employers starting to talk themselves about workforce housing, right, and how that that's something that they would be interested in. An incentive like this, if I, particularly if I was a grant source, and I said, "Wow, the city of Newburgh is really dedicated to this, in fact, they're putting money from their construction excise tax to this to get this going." I think it could also be an incentive to stimulate some other funding from the state. I think, you know, that's the way, you know, we're going to be able to really move it forward, I would think. You know, one workforce housing project here, you know, of 100 units would be huge, would be enormous in this community. And if, you know, $100,000, $150,000 would move towards getting that to happen, I think that would be enormous. I think it'd be enormous for all of our ADAC, Providence, School District, and on and on. And I think those are the people that we're starting to hear from. I think it's, you know, yeah, it may be a token, but so are the other 36 items that you've got, right, in a way. And so, you know, for me, I applaud the Affordable Housing Commission for pushing it forward. I think it's something that, we have a very limited toolkit, and we have less money. So any source that we could use to direct to an issue that I think impacts all of us is probably pretty important. But what do you need specifically, Doug? Any direction on any of this?
I've got some very good, interesting questions. So thank you for that. And so I will take this back to the Affordable Housing Commission, we will have another round, like I said, at least one more. I'll have to call a special meeting in February for the commission as well. Ultimately, they will come up with a final recommendation, what they want to do. And then, Council Johnson's question about keeping the development community informed, exercising the needs to be done there, we have a community engagement specialist, I don't know if you've got that. Get to steal the time now, but. And end up coming back with a proposal, they'll come up with a proposal to you, and you'll get to consider it. And you'll have more discussion.
I just have one more quick question. The SDCs that could be offset, is that just city SDCs, or is that all SDCs? So could we pay off, like, part of the school district SDC?
Well, the school district doesn't have an SDC, that construction excise tax.
Yeah, the park.
This, that's a question that City Engineer and I want to talk about, because, but it less here, under 197309, subsection 7, it says, "Including but not limited to system development, land acquisition in public." Could construction excise tax be written down? Possibly. SDC, system development charges, it's a parks SDC, there it could, could we write that one down? That's possible.
Okay.
So that kind of gets back to the mayor's question, the $300,000 in fees, overall, you know, how many units could you actually get? That's single-family SDCs are the last for most, I think.
Yeah, you know, the one thing, Doug, is that this notion of when, and this has come up a number of times over the years, and this whole, and the carrying costs for developers, particularly for larger projects, are, you know, they're excruciating, they're, you know, they're laying out a million dollars, and it's two or three or four years before they get to return. And I know you and I talked about the idea of getting the final, but tying it some way to the certificate of occupancy, so they don't get the COO until that's paid, or something like that. I mean, I think that might go a long way to, for the developers, because, you know, that's an outright cost that they have to bear.
Yeah, so part of the conversation that we have with the Home Builders Association is, instead of, you know, add a final, it's a big crunch, is could you back it up so it's 30 days or 60 days before the final?
Right.
And that allows them to get their financing, and they've got somebody using tow to purchase and so forth. It changes our revenue model for our budget purposes, but that's something that City Engineer and I and other works director could sit down, the finance director can pop through. So that's one possibility.
Awesome. All right. Anything else for Doug? If you've got enough from us, Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right. 10C, Resolution 2020-3638. David, is that you?
Well, this is the actual request for action to appoint your new city manager. It would be executed, well, be effective with the passage of the resolution, and his arrival is now set for February 24th. And what I'd like to chat about that date in particular, how we can help him manage that date. So with that in mind, we're talking about Dan Langheimer. Dan is currently serving in the position of Deputy County Manager for Rapt County, Colorado, Steamboat Springs area, northwest Colorado. Has worked there for, since 2016, prior to that served in Fort Collins, and prior to that served in Southern California. Somebody who brings a good deal of municipal experience, and currently has executive experience in a county government, so a pretty good size, certainly good geographic size. It's a huge county, great area. So with that, Dan, as we talked about in the work session, Dan was, he was selected out of 36 active candidates, 37 original candidate applicants, and went through a formal process to arrive at your doorstep at this point. We spent the weekend negotiating the agreement, RCB typing, using the ICMA format, which is the standardized city, international city management association contract format, which is by far the most typical among the city management profession. And so we got to, yes, on all the essential terms of that agreement, and so we had this before you. essential terms of that agreement. And so we had this before you to, it's actually verified that it would have been, and we'll give Dan a layup to come to Newburgh and get out of the snow and into the rain.
Questions, anyone more comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 20203638, appointing Dan Weinheimer as city manager, effective February 24th, 2020.
Further discussion?
I should mention, just for the record, the actual salary for Dan Weinheimer will be $160,000, dead center of the range that you were booked.
I just wanted to say that I thought that all of the candidates were great. And I appreciate everyone coming to like a meet and greet in a community that is struggling with some things. So I think that shows like the level of the candidates that we got is that those people openly and afterwards were very positive about it. Said, yeah, you know, there were some tough questions, but it was nice to see how actively involved the community is. And lots of news, even if it's bad, is better than nothing. And they were, they were, all of them were really open to that, that model and said really good things about the community. So I think I was really impressed with the, all of the candidates and the depth that we saw.
I'm just wondering, when's, when does David's service end and how does he pass on useful information to the community?
So Dan has asked that I be on speed dial, so I'm more than happy to do that. I, I, my physical presence here after your rise would be kind of like having dental in the office. It's not particularly useful. But I will be available to him as much as he needs for several weeks, after which time I'll be out in the country for a little bit, but still reachable. Regardless, I will always be available to him as a resource. I also serve as a senior advisor for city managers in my regional state, in my regional state. So one way or another, Dan will have facility access to me. I'm going to actually spend a lot of time with him, talking about all the resources that are out there. I came out of Colorado originally for and began my, and serve in Oregon as well. And it's a little bit of a learning curve, but it's an amazingly welcome and resourceful state in terms of city managers. There is a lot of places he can turn for help, not the least of which, of course, is yourselves. I'm going to add one more thing. I just say, I've said this before in the past, but that many applicants, as you mentioned, they came in and certainly none of them came in with eyes closed and heard about our, you know, the concerns of the community. It says a lot about the city of Newburgh and what, you know, where you are headed as a great community. And so, yeah, there's bad news, but there's a heck of a lot of good news. And they, you know, certainly the applicants saw that, sort of Dan saw that for sure.
So will this be in this week's graphic, is my other question?
Just one thing that I'll, I'll add is that I had the pleasure of speaking to one of his residences, actually the chair of the commission in Ralph County. And, you know, obviously was, you know, very pleased with what he had done. But what was sad that he was leaving Ralph County. You know, hopefully Ralph County's loss is, is our gain. And I think that's the way we look at it. Sorry to the folks of Ralph County, but Newburgh is a heck of a fine place. And we will, we'll do, you know, one of the things that they mentioned particularly about him, this person particularly mentioned is that he was very professional, very forward thinking. And I think, and I hope that that's what exactly we need. So, there we go. Do we have any more? Oh, go ahead, Roger.
My, when I look at this, Dan, as a candidate for our town, one of the things that pushed me over to support him was that I'm always on council, kind of like Sean O'Day talked to us this, earlier this evening. I want the majority of my time to be spent on things that have a 20 to 30 year horizon. Okay? So bypasses and water redundancy and those types of projects. To me, that's why I get excited about them, because that is going to be here long after I'm gone. And when I looked at his resume with the, his involvement with the Center for Economic Development, USC, and the development of strategies for trying to get funding through Congress, and his involvement with Congress, and, you know, also add in the 14 years of municipal management, I think that, you know, if you're looking at it from a lens of long-term infrastructure, like I, he's a great candidate.
All right. Anything else? Any others? All right. Do we have a motion?
On it.
On it. Okay. Okay. Question hasn't been called for. All right. All in favor of resolution 20203638. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ho same sign. Hearing none. Resolution passes. Dan, if you are listening, welcome. We will see you on February 24th. All right. All right. Council business, we're on to 11A issue tracker. Oh, sorry. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, with respect to that February 24th.
Oh, yes, right. My apologies.
So the council has had a provision in the past of squaring a candidate on the, on their first day. You don't have a council meeting that evening. It is a Monday. If your calendar is available, I would suggest that you consider that as a single item agenda, have a special meeting and have an open reception to the public to agree. Mr. Weinheimer that evening?
We'll have a little party.
Yeah, a little break.
A break. Okay. How's about a five a break? And we'll get back to the February 24th question, but I think we're, I think I still don't.
I think it's a good night if we're on 10C. Anything after that it gets a little?
Yes, there was a couple meetings that went closing, yeah. Well, I don't know if we ever did midnight, but yeah, there was a couple.
Things well with you?
Yes, they're quite well. I was thinking as I was considering that private in District Two, because you had a move.
You have made a candidate.
Correct.
Considering the last year, it's only been a year, kind of mucked up.
and community building opportunities. We're launching new initiatives and programs. We've cleaned up some practices that needed a fresh look. We have a newborn. Yes. And I love my daughter. I didn't love it, but growing. I survived.
And I promise.
There were some moments where I wondered what I had done myself. But I'm strong and fort. I'm glad I did today.
I've said your name, so you should be good.
Wouldn't they be actually getting audio from the audio?
Remember, shouldn't be placing.
Are you reading the same part like here again, anything in the picture?
Well, there's.
It was nice to see those remarks. Congratulations graduation. Don't you speak English?
No.
All right.
We're talking about that budget.
It's been busy.
It's okay.
Very busy. I think it's structured.
I see you.
We have a, 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 we have investigative report. But I guess we did not say our, our actual, yeah. We did take a poll of the, the findings, but please.
Well, anyway.
I don't think it's clear what response. I mean, I guess for me, I, I'm not clear because, like, there's a whole host of things that came up, so I'm not sure exactly what. And I guess, for me, the, the problem lies in, like, inviting more or more depth of litigation. There are some things we just can't respond to. I know Mr. Gunn sounded frustrated at that, but as an attorney, I think he probably understands that they wouldn't be very happy if we made statements that then invited more litigation, and that invites more taxpayer dollars to litigation. So, I mean, I guess that's, that's part of the problem is, I think, my understanding is there, the request is to make statements about, like, litigation things, which we just can't do without inviting more.
You, you did have a, you did have a resolution that you pretty much laid out your response at that legal, when you posted that document. So it did, it provided the findings as to why and how you were able to process them. I don't know what you need to migrate on that record.
I wonder if there needs to be more education about this. A lot of the people that I meet are understanding that the issues have to do with legal matters and with employment, and they say, "Yeah, I understand, you can't say anything." They know that. But some people don't seem to understand that. They just think we're hiding something. How are we educating the public? Through, what's her name? Lindsay.
Lacy.
Lacy, sorry.
Yeah.
Or what? But some statement that, that we are listening, that we're doing what we can, but we can't somehow educate people.
I perceive it more as like a desire to hear our personal collective opinion of investigative findings. Is that not what you understood from the start?
That's what people would like to know.
That's what I'm not saying, that's what the act was.
But they need to, and we don't.
I'm not saying that we do say that. I'm just saying I think it does make perfect sense.
That's the way I hear it too. And then we have no answer, but we need to give them answers with education.
My, my take was slightly, I don't think it was just necessarily just the investigation. I think, you know, a comment about all that has gone on. I mean, I think in some ways, and not everybody knows this, obviously, because it is personnel, it's legal, it matters. But actions have been taken. They have been taken for the last, I don't know how many months, and they continue to happen. And I think at some point, our actions sort of have to be the staple. We hired a new city manager tonight, and I think that was a fairly bold action. We heard earlier about human resources, et cetera, so. But, but I agree with Jane, and I, more than one person has asked me, it's funny that we had the presentation on the council manager form of government tonight, because people have asked me that, why, you know, maybe you all should explain a better way as to what the council's actual role is. Because again, this idea that, and people seem to think that we have the power to just fire everybody and do whatever we want, but that isn't the way it is. And so, anyway. So, I don't know where that leaves us, but.
I also thought maybe encouraging people to reach out to their district counselor to have a personal conversation, maybe, instead of, because it's hard to respond, I mean, as a group, you know, it's, it's, it's a little more difficult. But if I were to get an email or a phone call from someone in my district that says, "Can you explain to me more about why it seems like we just listen at council meetings?" I'd be more than happy to have a, like, a personal conversation about, you know, why that happens and that, that we are listening and that things do get done. But a lot of times it's under the surface, you don't actually know that they're being done. So maybe encouraging people to reach out individually to their, their district counselor. I, I don't know about that.
Sure, I think it makes sense. And for all those who are listening, please reach out. To all the counselors, don't reach out to the mayor. No, I'm just kidding, just kidding. No, feel free, feel free. Anytime. Yeah, please. All right, anything else on that issue tracker stuff? All right. I'm going to recommend, and I hope nobody's here for this particular item, that we table item 11C. And this has to do with the Willamette Falls locks, because I think we want to do a little more background work on this. So that's okay, unless anybody has a particular objection. Do we need a vote to, second? We got a second. All right, we'll have a vote anyway. Any further discussion on tabling item 11C? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing nigh, we have table 11C. The YCAP annual homeless count we mentioned earlier, anyone who would like to volunteer for that, we have information here on it, and so does YCAP. And that is the 29th of January, if I remember correctly. 22nd is the train, 29th is actual. Okay, so anyone who is interested in that, that is a very good service to the community. And now we have District 2 future vacancy update, that's 11E. There it is, and Sue is on.
Well, we have received a perfect score of zero applications. So I'll be extending the recruitment and we'll be doing a little more advertising. I had warned Rick this might happen because of the holidays, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, families, the flu. So just wanted to give you a heads up that I'll work with Lacy and see if we can't do a little more promotion than what I managed to get.
What would be sent to the project department?
I have to go back and look at my calendar tomorrow. I, I don't know off the top of my head. So we were aiming for the 21st, but if I have no applications, there's not really anyone for you to interview.
Okay.
Can we hear about applications at the door?
That's right.
I would guess that most people are afraid, that at least many of my friends asked me, "Why did I get involved in such a time?" And how do you answer that, Jane? Well, it's pretty simple. I've been through a lot of bad experiences. And it's better that they come out than to go on forever and stay uncovered. So it's good to get them out of the way. And for the next person coming out and saying, "You're going to look like a hero," because things are going to get better, and people will say, "Oh, that's because the new district two person." Maybe they'll say, "Because I can do it." And it doesn't necessarily mean you did something, but needs to. They need to know, this is, it's nothing to be afraid of. What's the worst that could happen?
So if you know of anybody in District 2, please let them know that there is a vacancy. All right, okay. Anything else? This executive session, I believe we do not need, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. So the, the insurance company has received a lawsuit, they're not analyzing it. They have nothing updated at this point, but it's on future basis.
A lawsuit? A lawsuit? Can we say a specific one or just?
The Wood's lawsuit.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Dave, I actually have a question. How, because on these, how do we do it? I mean, who do I ask this from? I don't know who to ask. I mean, ask Dave, or who do I ask about these things? I know, don't these belong to somebody else, these microphones? I think they do.
Hello, David Ruxite. So I talked to Matt back in December, we were getting on something on a budget coming up until, on the next council meeting. Mr. Mike gave an direction today, and I'm waiting for that, so I'll be putting that field in certain, we have a bitter already selected, you know, this is some of the stuff that we were essentially waiting on money until I heard the word.
Okay, awesome. Very good.
Tomorrow I should have a timeline for now, availability, but it would likely be something. It'll be an updated loss system, definitely have before, but 10 years.
All right, excellent. David?
A lot of those topics, so if you're comfortable with that, I'll go back to the last one.
Yep.
I just did a quick email search, I did respond to this one, it's back on this episode. Okay, that was the last communication.
All right, thank you, David. Okay, cool, and.
I can, I can resurrect that in case you didn't see that.
I think we replied to that.
Yeah, just reset the same thing. Say, one thing, one further, can I provide you based on the door?
What? I'm sorry.
Just like say, Derek, I want further communication, can I provide you with that? Is it me or?
If you have time to come here, we'll do.
I won't, I just want you to.
All right. Hearing, nothing else? Where's your?
Thank you.
Thank you all.